Item four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements. Do I hear a motion to approve? Have approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would respectfully request that item 11F be removed from the agenda. That's regarding our road cuts and street work. We just simply have not had a chance to complete that ordinance change. So item 11F, we request that you remove from the agenda for consideration of a later date.
Under new business. 11F, yes.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? We approve the amended agenda. Ever approval? There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Anderson. Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Public hearings, I believe there are... Okay, so I'm gonna let Mr. Collins explain our public hearings kind of process and the difference in that and citizen comments and the public hearings within the request for zoning that next.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission and the guests we have tonight. Regarding public hearings or items to be considered citizen comments, we've requested that if anyone is attending the meeting tonight because they want to speak to the Board of Commissioners regarding an item that has a public hearing on the agenda, that they not sign up under citizen comments and reserve those comments until the opening of the public hearing. That's the purpose of the public hearing. If someone is here tonight to speak on a matter other than something that has a public hearing schedule, we invite them to speak regarding that. So if they've signed up for something that is not to be considered later for a public hearing, we welcome them to speak at the public comment time. Also, as it relates to the public hearing, the public hearings are designed so that the public can speak, address the board, so you can understand of those concerns. The process for that will be that the public hearings will be open. You'd hear from the public in a manner that you so choose, close those public hearings, and then if there's a representative here, an engineer, developer, or some other thing to speak on behalf of an item that you're considering as a part of a vote, then we request that you allow them or at least consider engaging them at the time that matter's brought up for a vote.
So the public hearing, item five, public hearing, is for anyone who wants to come and just talk to us about something that may be going on in the city now that's not on the agenda?
That's correct. That's what the public comment would be for.
Okay. So, number five, public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak on anything that's not already on the agenda? If you'll step to the podium and tell us your name and your address and what you want to speak to us about.
My first time in a year to have my mask off in public place.
And if you'll make sure your microphone is on because...
Testing. Testing. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Marcia Elliott. I live at 7113 Beth Shears Road, and we are happy to be in the Fairview community since 1996. And I am going to speak about a general principle of government. Is that all right?
Yes, of course.
Okay. In 2007, pandemic hit game cafes and stores. In pandemic, to stop havoc, all game players collaborate. Cooperative strategic board games are becoming so, so popular. Three questions: Who are the collaborative players? Sectors in any city? What do we stand to win? And how does our playbook guide us? The medical is interdependent with business. Dr. Sherwood, Dr. Nash, public pharmacy, all rely on business for real estate, construction, shipping, medicines, business interrelated with Chamber of Commerce, our 501(c)(6)'s, and the interconnected education and nonprofits with their volunteers, providing band, sports, food supports, friends groups who help playgrounds, libraries, churches. All sectors seek quality of life. Citizens are the reason the game exists. Maslow's Pyramid says quality of life has tiers, first grounded in soil, which comes from which comes our food, water, followed by the need for safety next tier up. The rule of law for the sake of safety is the playbook. Government connects the dots to life. In 2019, The Tennessean wrote, "City Planner Collins Has Helped Spearhead the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan." They quote Collins, "We take a team approach to everything we do. That team consists of our elected officials, myself, our employees, and the community." End Tennessee quote. Six years ago, we were sitting in this room here as a collaborative team trying to figure out how to make payroll and avoid the risk of bankruptcy. Let's keep our winning streak going. Air on the side of caution on all our votes tonight. Ease the risk of litigation that Fairview could and I say will face as a municipality of 10,000 when we are responsible to test our water and monitor our groundwater. Standardize building lots within these new pods. Follow the 2040 more closely than we did the 2020 and keep the precedent of 125-foot boundary around the park. Remember incidences like Otter Creek. Development is acceptable, very needed, but this density in some of these locations with their potential for more flooded basements, totaled cars, and blue line streams, please uphold the spirit of 2040. And thank you for your service. I will give my breathing air to the rest of the community and follow online. Thank you.
If that is all, then we will close the public hearing. Citizen comments. Ms. Johnson.
Mayor, can I interrupt for one second? That was... We skipped... Did we skip the societal order a little bit? Because that was citizens' comments.
I believe that would just be one under citizen comments. As I understand it.
Okay, so...
So, okay, so, please forgive me. Ms. Johnson, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am. We have a total of five tonight. Ms. Elliott was the first. Ms. Carla Langford is number two.
Yes.
I think the confusion, Madam Mayor, was that public hearings was just where Mr. Collins was going to explain about public hearings. And then we're under citizen comments now.
Do you want me to hold my comments until later?
No.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carla Langford, and I reside at 7391 Crow Cut Road, Clay Brook Farm here in Fairview. I understand that a recommendation was placed on the agenda tonight to discuss requiring manure bags to be used on horses ridden in the nature park. Having a 60-plus-year relationship with Bowie Nature Park, I am not here to badger the intent of the Bowie family about park use but to provide useful information which may be beneficial to the Board of Commissioners. I personally obtained information which you have tonight pertaining to park requirements for use of manure bags from 15 city, state, and national park systems. None required the use of manure bags on horses when ridden. Five systems surveyed had separate trails designated for hikers, bicycles, and horses. These were state parks with greater than 1,000 acres of parkland. The remaining 10 systems either had fully shared trails or they permitted hikers to use the designated horse trails in addition to the pedestrian-only trails. The CDC has published that horse manure is unlikely to spread any disease to people, including bacterial problems with E. coli, which is killed in sunlight. Horses are vegetarians. Human and dog waste is far more likely to spread disease and parasites to humans. It is biodegradable, natural, and contains no petroleum or animal byproducts. There are no known toxic effects on humans due to exposure to horse manure. The CDC does not consider horse manure to be biohazard and is therefore not controlled. The issue presented here is not a new subject. J.D. Harbor, retired Mounted Patrol Sergeant from Metro Nashville Police Department, researched and prepared a study used by the Metro Nashville Police Department and throughout park systems across the U.S. Although Mr. Harbor was unable to be with us tonight, he graciously agreed to share this study with the Fairview BOC. I will be forwarding this study upon my receipt, anticipated to be within the next few days for the Board's review, and request that this entry on the agenda be tabled until the BOC has had time to review the study. Of note, it is not a standard training protocol in any equine discipline or for any breed of horse to be taught to accept wearing a manure bag. Should this become a mandated requirement, the use of a five-strap manure bag across the hindquarters of a horse will quickly become a safety issue with riders and nearby hikers. In contrast, although manure is caught from carriage horses used in municipal settings, the manure bags are not attached to the horses. They are attached to the carriages for safety. In conclusion, Tuesday evening, I had the opportunity to discuss this issue with two BOC members and made a suggestion for a solution to horse manure on the trails. My recommendation was to use a tying harrow behind the park-owned ATV to dis...
Ms. Langford, I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Oh, I didn't hear the bell. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
You have my report.
Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Helen Carey.
Part of my time to allow Carla to finish. Thank you, Carla. That was beautifully done. I'm Helen Carey. I live at 2950 Fairview Boulevard, and we have... We requested to be annexed into the city so that we could participate. I too am here about the proposed rule about horse tailbags. There... I didn't find out about this until day before yesterday. I too would request that you table this for tonight to allow me to obtain scientific information that has been promised to me by the outback horse... Out... Excuse me. Restraited. The horsemen that ride all over the nation, and this is a national organization, they have done studies and have the documentation to show you that there is no hazard in horse manure. There are no other parks in Tennessee that require this. And I feel like the fact that it refers specifically to city-owned property is perhaps directed at my husband and I, since we're the crazy old people that ride our horses in town. I would like to point out that we've been invited into businesses. We are invited by businesses to come by and horseback. We were inside a store to pose with Santa Claus with our horses for Christmas pictures by invitation of the owner of the store. We carry with us when we ride in town a bag and a scoop, and we clean up. We are respectful of everybody's property and of everybody's right of way and do our best to be good citizens and good ambassadors for the equine community in Fairview. So it is my request that you give us the opportunity to present information that will totally eliminate any concerns about hazards from horse manure. We have been riding here since before there was a park service and have always loved the park and supported the park and followed the rules and will continue to do so. We also are gonna obtain... There's a state paper published on the financial impact of the equestrian community on the state and on all of our communities. And by the way, Williamson County has one of the highest horses per capita in the state. So we make a contribution to our community and would like to feel a little bit less unwanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Jerry Housley. Jenny Housley.
Jenny Housley, 778 High Point Ridge Road. We've been here 40 years. I've raised my children in this park. They've ridden since they were this big. We just love this park. We've followed rules. We just beg you to please study this before you put this into place with these bags. And it's just not a safe situation. I have information, can I distribute or will you distribute, from the backcountry horsemen? I've been called from Oregon, Utah today with information. People saw it posted. So all these people are supporting us and requesting you to study this and to please not have these tailbags on horses. Anyway, thank you very much. Do I give this?
If you'll give that to Mr. Collins, he'll make sure that we get it.
Thank you very much. We love this community and appreciate being a part of it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Mary Tansey.
Hello?
Hello.
My name is Mary Tansey. I live at 2669 Fred Sharp Road, Calioka, Tennessee. I grew up here in Williamson County. I'm a local. Love it. It's a wonderful place. I come here and ride with my friends. I pay my fees. It's a great park. I do appreciate y'all letting us come and ride, but I now have ridden all over the United States in different areas and never had to put a tailbag on. Only place I've ever seen it done is in New York City and downtown Nashville. Anyway, I know that I don't mind, you know, paying my fee to come and ride. I didn't know if the hikers or bikers or people that fish, if they'd pay a fee also. I wasn't sure about that. I do know that these ducks, dogs, they carry all kinds of disease in their feces, where really horses don't. It would be... I can't imagine training one to put on here. I would think it could be a... If they got spooked or scared with that thing, it could be a pretty big liability. I'm not sure, but I would think. I do think that people that do come and park and unload their horses ought to pick up their manure. You know, do that at other places where I go. We take it and, you know, usually have a dump site or put it away. So... But anyway, we sure appreciate y'all letting us come up here and talk tonight and, you know, hope we can get this all worked out. It's a wonderful place, and we love Middleton City. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all? Ms. Johnson. Item seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions. I don't believe we have any tonight. Staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins.
Mayor, just two items for you tonight. First, I sent you an email earlier today to let everyone know that obviously we've been on a rotational staff due to COVID for the last several months. That rotational staffing for the city will end on Monday. We'll be back to full staff in all departments on Monday. With that, all of our department heads will be returning to our meetings with the next meeting, April 15th. We'll start back with our standard monthly reports that we got from the department heads at that time. We look forward to getting you that information and having everyone back to work in a safe manner. Secondly, I will be getting some information out to you and to the community regarding this year's Focus on Fairview event. As you're aware, periodically, we do a Focus on Fairview where we kind of open the doors to everything that's taking place with the city, with our financials, with our operations. Everything that we have going on is just a general community update. This year will be a little more important financially than the others because, as you know, we've discussed really for the last 12 to 14 months, the opportunity for a bond issue regarding some much-needed capital improvements we have across the community. We anticipate that that bond issue will take place in the third quarter of this year, the third calendar quarter, no later than December of this year. And I think it'd be important for everyone to understand not only the need for that but the list of projects we'll complete with the bond proceeds from that. So we'll get that information out. We look forward to making some investments in Fairview's infrastructure that really haven't been made before. It's a great opportunity to do it. We look forward to not only getting the information out but getting the work done as well. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, O business. Ordinance 2021-02, rezoning of parcel on Sleepy Hollow Road. We will now open the public hearing for that item. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
I live at 7116 Sleepy Hollow. It's like across and down a little bit. I don't know. I've missed if there was talk about this beforehand. I'm not against it or for it, but I just wanted to, I guess, be on the record as saying about a year ago, I came in and I wanted to get a four-foot allowance to the 25-foot minimum to build a car garage, and I couldn't get it. And, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen tonight. It doesn't matter to me if they build it. That's fine. I don't care. But I was just gonna, you know, try to get some answers why if this one does pass, why I couldn't mind being so close, like 100 feet away. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item? Then we will close the public hearing on this item. Vice Mayor Anderson, item two, if you will read that.
Item two, second final reading of ordinance 2021-02, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 1.58 acres of property located at 7109 Sleepy Hollow Road, Williamson County Tax Map 069, parcel 0.55, from RS40, single-family low-density residential, to R20, single-family medium-density residential. Owner, Nicholas Vico.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the commission, just as a reminder, this item is brought before you because the property owner desires to build a single-family home on the property. The lot size didn't allow for two RS40 homes or RS40 sites. That's why it was requested to be rezoned from R40 to R20. Mr. Vico could not be here tonight simply because of a conflict with his work, and he asked that I relay that information to you. So that's what's being done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10B, ordinance 2021-03, rezoning of parcel on City Center Way. We will now open the public hearing on that matter. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Mr. Collins, I believe there had been discussion about the owner being on cell phone if we needed it.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, the representative for this property or the rezoning request was unable to attend. He's from out of state. And so after we get to the public hearing, if there's an opportunity to vote or if this decision of the Board to vote, and you have questions of the representative, if it's your pleasure, we can make arrangements to have him on the cell phone, a speakerphone during this meeting if you so choose to ask any questions you may have.
Okay. So is there anyone else here to speak on this? I'm sorry. I did not hear you. You're here to speak on which one?
My name's Jeremy Hall. I'm here to speak for Brian Peterson. He couldn't make it, so I'm attending for him.
Okay. Would you like to... Would you like to speak on?
Public hearing.
This is public hearing?
Yes.
Does he need to wait until... Do you want him to wait?
I don't want to speak for the gentleman, but I believe he simply hears a representative of the developer should, after the public hearing, you have questions of the developer.
Then you can... I'm so sorry. Sit on the front row, just in case. So hearing none will close the public hearing on this item. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the ordinance, please.
B2, second and final reading of ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 0.89 acres of property located at 7001 City Center Way, Williamson County Tax Map 042, parcel 168.10, from MSMU, Main Street Mixed Use, to CG Commercial General. Owner, Family Advantage Federal Credit Union.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the zoning request. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'll just add comments. In studying the Main Street mixed use, a lot of the definition and correlation is to pedestrian access, to walkability. So I'm just... I've been back and forth on this one, trying to picture that fit and that use and right in front of the city center here. And ultimately, just, I don't know if it ultimately fits in that vision.
Mayor, so we've kind of been talking back and forth about CG, just a commercial general. We're really close to revamping all of our commercial zoning. And I know that this has come up before with wanting to potentially wait until we have a little bit more... A better idea of exactly what we want to go there. So when we start talking about just general, commercial, general, I would rather wait.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor, Commissioner Lucas?
I would just like to say that with the traffic right there, having to go in and out of Hardee's, I just don't see that as a good option there. And also, there is a road, Volvo Lane, that, you know, we need to research more to find out if that's a better option for something that would be in that, you know, built in that area. So I just feel like we need a little more information, a little more time, to figure out exactly, you know, what's a good fit there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor Anderson.
So...
This is your motion to deny.
Right. So I'm saying aye to deny or nay?
Aye to deny.
Aye to deny. Thank you.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item C, Resolution 28-20.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself on C and D. I'm the property owner on C.
Okay. Annexation and zoning of parcel on Northwest Highway. We'll now open the public hearing on item C2. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
My name is Marshall Walker, and I live on 7229 Northwest Highway. And I'm not really here to fight the rezoning or the annexation so much. I'm just here to speak up on the behalf of many of my neighbors that live on Northwest Highway and the surrounding neighborhoods. Many of us use that area to walk our grandkids and our dogs and many cycle and many things. So I would just implore you guys to just be careful. Take your time on all of this development. Take your time on all of this development. Already in, since 2013, when my wife and I have moved out there, it has become a speed zone. It is just crazy. I mean, if the police want to make some money, revenue on speeders, they should just come sit in my driveway. I'll be happy to let them do that. And it has completely, it's just crazy out there these days. And if we allow those developments, there's going to be 28 homes right there in those two lots of the Northwest Highway. Again, I'm not here to fight that. That's their land. I want them to be able to do what they want to. I just think as a city, just like the Bowie Park is a gem, Northwest Highway is also a gem of Fairview. That's why my wife and I chose to live there with the trees and the alleyway, and it could be such a neat little boulevard in Fairview. Right now, years ago, before I lived in Fairview, the city annexed Northwest Highway and is not taking care of it at all. So I would think before you guys annex it, can you take care of it? And if you are, I would just implore you, there are so many research articles out there on safe streets. I can, in fact, I will email each one of you after this with some research by AARP on safe streets as far as like bike lanes and sidewalks and things like that. So we have the opportunity as a community to have some really cool space here and not just be a Spring Hill or some of the other places where they're just packed in. So again, I'm not here to fight the development. I'm just here to just implore you guys to think about some options to make the street safer for those of us that already live out there and really enjoy the community so far. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for this public hearing? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the resolution, please.
C2, resolution 28-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, with R20, single-family medium-density zoning, map 021, parcel 5.56.02, Northwest Highway, 5.348, sorry, 5.384 acres, owner Jingo Building Group.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
First, I'd like to say that the planning commission voted unanimously in favor of the annexation and positive recommendation to the BOC for this property. In Fairview's 2040 plan, this property is slated as new residential medium neighborhood. The R20 zoning request falls in line with a lower-density plan for this area. The property will include all infrastructure, public sewer, water, natural gas, and underground electric. This property has direct access, one-half mile from Highway 96, so there will be no traffic issues. Northwest Highway is slated to be on the improved, where we're going to improve roads in the future. This property has direct access to city-owned and maintained roads, adjoining city property owned by the city of Fairview, and sits inside the center of the growth corridor that has already been approved by the city of Fairview. The larger lots planned for this neighborhood and homes built in the $650,000 to $850,000 range will have an extremely positive impact on Fairview long-term. The property was not on the recent transition for Williamson County to go to the five-acre per lot, which means that it is inside the Fairview urban growth boundary and is expected to be annexed into the city of Fairview already. After this evidence that leads, I have a question, which leads to my question. On November 19, 2020, the first annexation came before the BOC with a unanimous vote for approval. And then on December 17, 2020, the second annexation resolution came before the BOC with a 2-2 vote, causing the motion for approval to fail. I must be missing something. With the evidence presented, I don't understand why it would fail, and I really need to understand that tonight. I have pulled records showing annexations from R40 to R20 from January 18, 2018 to February 4, 2021. All were passed.
Yeah, Mayor. So I was the commissioner to put this back on the agenda. This subdivision, it makes sense. In the area that we're looking at, with the type of homes that we're going to be talking about putting in, with the growth boundary, with, with so many things, so many things are right about this subdivision. So if there is opposition, I would like just for someone to share, so I can understand, better understand what the opposition is. That's it, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Mayor Rainey?
No.
Okay. Item D, resolution 29-20, annexation and zoning of parcel on Northwest Highway. We'll open the public hearing on item D2, if there's anyone here to speak to that. Anyone for item D2?
Yeah, Marshall Walker, 7229 Northwest Highway. You guys brought up a couple of things in that last thing, and since these lots are adjoining and will be doing the same thing, I have a question. One of the things, Lisa, that you just mentioned said no traffic issues. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? And I would like for somebody to come sit in my driveway for just a minute and say no traffic issues.
It's not a question-answer scenario.
Okay. Okay. So I'll just leave that as my comment. The other thing, too, is since this is my opportunity to say something before it gets passed, is again, if there's any way to do this, I would implore you guys, again, to have the developers have some skin in the game for the roads, because the road is horrible. And again, the traffic issue, there is traffic issues, and it will be even more. When you think two, at least two or three cars per home, that road is going to be dangerous. All those cars are beginning to be going through. So if there's some way for you guys to at least have some kind of way before them just building houses and then be gone, and that's it. So I'll just implore you guys, again, think about that. I know you mentioned that Northwest Highway is slated for improvement, but when is that going to happen? And in the city, it just, they won't even fix potholes on the road. So I just, I don't have any faith in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just one regarding the city's failure to fix potholes. If there's a question that someone has regarding a pothole so that it needs to be repaired, our public works department typically works pretty quickly on those. I would encourage anyone, you can email me directly, scollins@cityoffairview.org. If you can't reach me by email, my personal cell phone number is 205-210-1915. I'd be glad to make that information available. It's also on business card. So if there's ever an opportunity where the city needs to make those repairs, I would encourage you to call me or contact me as quickly as you can, and we'll make sure those are remedied to the best that we can.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Rick Morrison. I live at 7250 Northwest Highway, right down the street from this. Just a couple of things with, I have no problem with progress here, just in keeping with what's already in that area. All the lots on Northwest Highway are at least an acre that are in that area. All the subdivision across the street from us are all on a minimum of one acre, acre-and-a-half lots. I'm on 10 acres. The other houses are two or more acres. I would like to see it maybe stay at one-acre lots or not any smaller than half-acre lots, especially with the size homes they're talking about building. The other thing, and just with the roads, and I know that's not on the issue today, there are, since we do have subdivisions post in place, Lincoln Park, Stable Acres, all those families walk up and down there. I mean, there's a lot of people traveling. I don't know if it's an option whenever the roads are updated. Of course, we love the trees down either side. If you'll look, there are no accidents on that road. So I don't know. What I've read and the research I've done is widening and paving those roads in rural areas usually increases speed and traffic flow, which I know at some point that's going to happen. But to either have sidewalks or something in there or a lane where people can bike and walk, because there are a lot of people traveling. I don't know if speed humps, I've been reading about those, or any kind of possibility to be put up on that road to help slow some traffic down. I know you can do them up to around 30 miles an hour, so people can slow down a little bit and make that, but it will prevent and discourage speeding. That's it. I, you know, I hope that they will, or you will decide for this property, that maybe the zoning should be at least a half acre without a putt on top of it, or an acre lot. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Any other people that wanted to talk on this? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the ordinance, please.
D2, resolution 29-20, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, with R20, single-family medium-density zoning, map 021, parcel 056.02, 7282 Northwest Highway, 9.94 acres, owners Tony and Melissa Cavender.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This is an R20 zone. That means half-acre lots. This is not high-density. The subdivision that was approved a while back that's across the street, that is high-density. This, what we're looking at is R20. R40 is one acre. R20 is half acre. So this is medium-density, not high-density. I just wanted that to be clear. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor. You know, one thing that I, that I do like, and I think the community likes, is to hear what we have to say up here, rather than just voting on something, maybe giving an explanation of why we're voting. You guys have come tonight, the citizens show up, they watch the BOC meetings, and I think it's always important to kind of understand where we, where we stand. Once again, my opinion is this subdivision makes sense. It's RS20, it's half-acre lots, it's where we want to be in the community. And if there is opposition, I would just like to know on the board, so I can better understand now and in the future, why a subdivision of this nature would not make sense, especially when we talk about the homes that will be going in here. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, I'm Tony Cavender, and I've done several developments in here, and most everything we've done is on half-acre lots. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of confused on several things. We had a plan, I guess the city has adopted, that's, and this property is actually, the plan that was adopted actually shows higher density than what we're proposing. So I'm lost on, I'm just really just, I'm blown away. So we paid 100 and something thousand dollars for this plan, but yet we're not abiding by it. So this, this actually shows higher density, is what, is what was voted on, and I guess each of you have voted on it, or some of you have. But now we're, we're coming back in at half-acre lots. You can't get any nicer than that in a, in a city. I mean, I mean, if you're not going to be a city, you know, you, I mean, I'm kind of blown away by why you even adopted Northwest Highway, as far as this gentleman was talking about. So, I mean, we're wanting half-acre lots with, you know, nice houses. I mean, you know, sort of a very nice product that's over there. And talk about walking, I mean, we have to, you know, we have to put in sidewalks. I mean, you know, there's sidewalks in there, there's plenty of places to walk in with inside this, you know, this subdivision. You certainly don't need to walk on narrow road with some trees and tree lines and things like that. I mean, there'll be a place to take your pets and things and enjoy this subdivision that's inside, with lit, you know, with lights, you know, with streetlights. So I'm just really trying to wrap my head around, what am I missing? Because these are half-acre lots. I don't know what this board wants me to do. I mean, or what they want the Fairview to be. I mean, I could come back in and redo this and, and bring it back in at a higher density. I mean, if that's, and just do it myself, and I can bring it back into the board. I don't want to do that. I want to make, I want to make it half-acre lots. That's what I like doing. So I just, you know, I'm missing why we're getting, I'm missing why you're voting against what you're voting. I don't know why, because you've obviously adopted a plan that we, the city paid a good portion of money, and we're not abiding by it now. So I mean, I just, just kind of, we're flip-flopping. I just don't, you know, I just need to know what you guys want us to do, and I'd be glad to bring that product to you. So if you want high-density, I'd be glad to redo it and make it high-density, and we'll get it through. That's all I got to say.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, more discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Mayor Rainey?
Nay.
Item E, ordinance 2020-29, rezoning of parcel at Wayne's Line in Mangrum Lane. We'll open the public hearing on that. Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, I forgot that you were out there.
No worries.
We'll open the public hearing on that item now, if there's anyone here to speak on that. Is there anyone here to speak to the board tonight that has not spoken to us before? Yes. You haven't spoken to us before. Have you spoken to us before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Why don't we let the people that have, we've not heard from before go first? If that's okay?
Hello, I am Candy Groves. I'm here speaking for the Groves family to put a face on the Groves property that is behind Bowie Park and next to Cox Run. I just kind of want to be myself with you guys. You have a letter from us. I hope that you have read it. I want you to know that my father-in-law bought this property a very long time ago in auction from his own family. He wanted to have a piece of Fairview. Not only did he buy that one, we now have property on Old Franklin Road. That's where we live now, on Old Franklin Road. So when we inherited the property, we moved to Fairview because we love Fairview. Fairview is quaint, it's progressing, it has so much to offer, but yet we're stuck. I work at Fairview High School. Some of you might know my face. Your students will definitely know my voice. I've been there for eight years, and I can't tell you how happy it's been for me to be there. There's absolutely nothing that we want more than... There's absolutely nothing that we want more than to bring a product that would make Fairview proud to have and that our name would be behind. We have had so many people offer over the years to buy this property, low-ball, high-ball, whatever, we said no. We met Dan and knew that it was the right fit. He has got a product that is beautiful. It will bring nice homes, sidewalks that everyone is so, you know, worried about, playground for children, and I just think it will increase the value of the homes around. I am really nervous, in case you do, I really don't know why. There's been such a big situation about this, but I do want you to know that we care about the park, absolutely care about the park, we love the park, we care about Cox Run, we absolutely don't want anything to happen to any of our neighbors. But I do want to remind you that Cox Run was once a farm, and if you live in a subdivision, it was once a farm. And if you trust in our BOC and our manager, that's what we've elected you guys for. I think that you'll be able to see that this is a beautiful opportunity for Fairview to be proud of. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has not addressed the board before with your concerns about?
I'm Frank Dial, I live on Wayne's Lane, dead end, 7125. I may not even be supposed to be speaking on this. Is this about the development that's going in there?
Yes.
The Bowie Park behind us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, then I'll go ahead and speak for the residents on Wayne's Lane that border that property line in the back. And I'm not against growth, it sounds like a great neighborhood that's going in. But I hear the term increase the value of our property, but the eight or nine residents that, on that side of Wayne's Lane that front that property line, we're 70 years old, value to us is what we perceive when we walk out on the porch and look behind us, that's value. And that's for the rest of my life. I moved here eight years ago, I love Fairview. And I want to address the developers, if I can, about what they call a buffer, which is what we're going to be looking at. And I guess that's what, if I've heard this word, buffer, what is going to happen there? I want to know, I'm asking. Do I ask you all, or do I ask the developer?
It's not a question-and-answer scenario, sir, it's just a public comment, so you can talk to the developer after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The other comment would be to the problems associated with the road that would come into Wayne's Lane there. There's, like I say, about 15 total residents on Wayne's Lane, which means we've got about 30 cars, and it's a very dangerous intersection. I've almost been hit twice, I came very close. If you're turning right onto Wayne's Lane, it's very dangerous. If you're coming down Cox Pike and somebody's getting ready to turn left, it's very dangerous. I don't want to go into all the details there, but you're going to add 400 to 500 more cars coming in there, we'll be trapped on Wayne's Lane. And I want to talk to you all about looking into that and how serious that would be, that that has to be changed. I'm for the neighborhood, it's no problem, but what we're having to look at, talking about increasing the value of our property, I want that addressed, and I want the problems with the traffic that could be associated with that new interchange there. Can anybody speak to that, or is that something afterward or another time?
This is, I'm sorry, but this is not a question-and-answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe there would if it was pleasure of the board. If there's a motion after the public hearing, it would be appropriate to ask the developer at that time to address those concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak that has not addressed the board prior to tonight?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Mark Schenkel, resident of Fairview for about 16 years. I teach and practice strategy and entrepreneurship for a living, it's what I spend all my time I'm supposed to be presenting tonight as part of a broader group, so I hope when we come back to slides, that I might get a chance to share some thoughts at the time. But there are essentially four things that I was asked to illustrate in the park tonight. But before I do that, in terms of the slides themselves and the issues, I think you're all very aware of the mechanics of the issues. I've appreciated the opportunity to talk with some of you one-on-one, appreciated the opportunity with Vice Mayor Anderson to go ride the property, share thoughts on what I've seen out there. I hike that park literally every day of the year, and I hike the perimeter trail every day of the year. I can probably hike it blindfolded to tell you as far as what it looks like and the impact of things. I share all this with you. Simply, I have one observation as a 16-year resident here, and I think you're hearing it in bits and pieces. We take a lot of these transactions, and we treat them as transactions. And what I see as fundamentally missing is vision, and vision should drive strategy. And we have a 20-40 plan, which I've heard from different folks, that it's been adopted, it's not been adopted, it's been adopted but it has conflicts and internal conflicts within it. And I think the first person that spoke tonight, Marcia, laid out a very important piece to this, and that is very simply that you all are entrusted to act on our behaves. And a big part of that is vision, and a big part of that is the strategy through which you're enacting your vision. This is a unique property, and this is why I bring up my professional experience. I also spent some time, I am not a professional engineer, and I want to make that very clear, my training is not engineering, my training is business and business strategy. But I did spend time running a civil engineering firm, so I do understand a bit about site plans, I've been around it, I've been around issues like this, and I've seen issues like this. And the strategy piece to this is you have a unique property, all properties are unique, right? Realtors will tell you that all the time, developers will tell you that all the time. What is unique? The uniqueness of this property is that it sits above the park, and that's a challenge from a water standpoint. So, all the slides that I was going to cover, and everyone's aware of this, we have soil erosion possibilities, you have engineering issues, you have legal issues, you have oversight issues. You also have the spirit and the intent. And when I talk about vision with students, with people that I consult with, I always start with vision and values and trying to understand what is the spirit of what you're trying to do. After 16 years of being here, I have a very difficult time trying to understand at times what the vision for Fairview is. Like many of the people that have spoke here this evening, I moved here for quiet, I moved here for small. By the sheer nature of what I do, I teach people to start businesses, I'm not anti-development, I'm not anti-growth, but you have to be smart about it. And the key thing that I see with this particular property is that it is above grade, and it's going to present water issues. And what I'm hearing out of the developers to this point, I'm seeing a plan that abuts up to the property line. I'm hearing that we will solve water problems down the road, but I'm also hearing time and time again about properties like Kyle's Creek and Otter Creek, and all these other properties, even Cox Run, sorry, we made mistakes in the past and we haven't fixed those things. That is what I'm getting at when I say transactional versus vision. To me, this property is zoned at R-40, call that medium, call that low, I'm not sure, Vice Mayor Anderson, the technical, so I'm sorry there, how we want to define that. But there are other definitions out there, and all of these essentially, and the slides that I was tasked with tonight and talking a little bit about, all of these things come with risks at a strategic level. What do you want this to look like when it is done? And that's what, to me, I've entrusted to you all with my vote as on the commission, and my hope for you all as public representatives, what is the vision? The vision, when you walk that park right now with 35 feet, even with a 35-foot proposed combination between a boundary and a setback, if you will, right, that is incredibly small. All of the detention ponds, there are two runoff areas to this, and whether you detain it, whether you retain it, if the goal is to let any of that water go over into the park, it is going to have problems. And strategically, is that what you want? Do you want that park to become essentially a problem for people when they're walking on it? I've heard people also talk tonight about the gem of Fairview. I know a lot of people that do come to Fairview, people like Bill Evans, for example, Bill Evans Glass, I'm sure many of you've heard of that. He comes out here and runs, he's a good friend of mine, he talks in my courses. He looks at that park, and he says, "This thing is amazing." But I can only imagine what he would say if he's going along the perimeter trail and 35 feet over the property line, he's looking at eight houses, and he's looking at a river of water, which, we have photos and slides tonight to show you what it looks like now, we have calculations to show you how much water will run off. From my own engineering, or time spent in engineering, you can do the math and you can make the math look right, but if the math doesn't translate into implementation, that's the issue strategically to me at a board. So, the risks, as I see it, are the risks of eroding the history of that property. The Bowie family came here, and they entrusted this city with a piece of property that they viewed as something worth building and making nicer for us all to enjoy and conserve. And this city made an agreement with that family to take care of it, and then do that in spirit. There's also the legal risk here that I see, and I want to remind you that that legal risk is not just in the technical mechanics of making drawings work and passing ordinances and that type of thing. There's the legal risk of enforcing all this stuff, once it's all said and done. And we all know that that is not happening. We all know that TDEC has all the responsibilities, and that is a way that we can shift risk around within different legal entities. But the risk from a strategic perspective is, once you uncork that proverbial genie out of the bottle, you're not putting it back in. So, how do you enforce all of these different things that this is going to uncork afterwards? And what I've seen in my 16 years here is I've seen a lot of people that will essentially say, "We got that wrong, but we're doing better." The relative improvement is great, but if you can't enforce some of these issues on the back end, why create the problem to begin with? There is also something I want to speak to, a little bit bigger picture here. The process that I've seen on the way this is handled, I understand the process, I understand we're here to talk about the issues that haven't been previously addressed, I get it. But bigger picture, what we're also doing here is kind of kicking a can down the road, and we're not acknowledging that in the development process, the developers meet things at a very specific point in time, they meet all the rules, and then once that stuff is gone, they're gone. That's happened in my neighborhood, I've watched it happen in other neighborhoods in the time I've been here. Again, I'm not anti-development. There's an inherent conflict of interest when someone comes before you and says that I want you to redo something that you've decided before for monetary gain. That's not inherently wrong either, but it does create an inherent conflict that you all have the hard job of managing, right? You have to be the bad guys to say no in some cases, or the good guys to say yes, and gals, right? So, for me, my point there is simply that we have to think about these issues genuinely as, what are they going to create down the road? And strategically, there's two big issues. What do you want the vision to be? What do you want to create down the road from a path-dependent standpoint? If you're not familiar with, if you've ever heard the term path dependence, once you start to do some things, you can't go back. It's a simple concept, but that's what we're talking about here. Once we build homes, those homes are going to be there, you're not going to go take them back. Those are the problems that I think I've heard about in terms of the Cox Run subdivision to this point. I don't want to see those in the park. From an integrity standpoint, the city promised that family to take care of the park in a very, you know, respectful way. So, from my perspective, a lot of the things that you're going to hear about from the different citizens in here that have concerns around the park are really simply asking a strategic question. What do you want it to be? Do you want it to be the kind of park that you're walking around looking at houses where all of the light is encroaching in the park and it's ruining the ambiance? There's no way that anybody that likes nature is going to run along that trail or walk along that trail and say to themselves, "Wow, it was a great idea to build all these houses. Wow, that split-rail four fence that's not maintained in 10 years, that was a great idea, that really changes the look." It's not. When those detention ponds or retention ponds fill in and they start encroaching in the park, who's responsible for that? Who's going to enforce that? Who's going to deal with that? All of that comes down to vision. Personally, I think there is already a precedent in place, as I spoke with you on our tour the other day, Vice Mayor Anderson. There's plenty of evidence out there that 100, 125 foot of a boundary with a road in between things is the kind of buffer you want to put around things. Strategically, if you all commit to putting that boundary around that entire park, that to me is a strategic vision that implies that you care about that park truly as a resource, and that you're willing to protect it. My personal opinion, that's really the answer here. My personal opinion is five acre lots, I know that's not what the developer wants, I know that makes less money, I know that incurs higher costs, I get all that. But at the end of the day, the challenge you all have and the task is to decide whether that's the vision that you want or not. You can't avoid that question to me, other than to get sucked down into these little mechanical questions over, well, can we keep this little water, can we keep that water? I think the one thing that we all learned in the past week, there's a lot of water problems in this area regardless of the best efforts to keep them out from all developers, right? I just don't want to simply see that park be damaged irreversibly and go against the spirit of what the family that entrusted us with, as well as truly the spirit of having a resource here that people from the outside come to to enjoy, as well as the people that are here enjoy on a regular basis. That's all I have, I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that has not addressed the board previous to tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. We put together a presentation, so...
We need your name and your...
My name is Tim Rocco, I live at 7315 Cox Run Court.
Okay, and you're the one with the presentation?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
You have the presentation?
We've given it to Mr. Collins, and it's on your AV system.
Okay, all the commissioners have had the opportunity to view that. Are there any questions from the commissioners about the presentation? None? Okay, so, we've seen it, do we want to see it again tonight? I'm going to ask the board.
Did I hear you guys say you revised it?
We have revised it.
So, we don't have a new copy of what you've done?
You do, yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions from the commissioners about the presentation? Any specific questions? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Can we show the presentation? Can we show the slides during?
I think...
During this hearing.
Do you want to see the slides again?
That's fine.
We also have our copies, we're here as well if I could give you all our copy of that.
If you'll give it to Mr. Collins, he'll make sure we get it. With IT problems that we're having, can we show the presentation?
Thank you. Mayor, I believe, Michael, would you just make sure, it's loaded on the system, so it may take us just a moment to prepare that for you. I'll distribute these after the presentation, unless you prefer to have them now.
There we go. All right. We'd first like you all to know that we... We'd first like you all to know that we understand the need for Fairview to grow. We understand that the estimated $200,000 in potential annual tax revenue that such a development, the Grove's property, would generate. We understand the desire of property owners to sell acreage during a time when it commands a premium price. We also understand the advantages that thoughtful planned growth would bring to our community. What we don't understand is how consideration to approve a planned overlay district development that would potentially damage Bowie Nature Park and the surrounding neighborhood is being entertained. We don't understand how a total of 168 homes, 85% of them on lots less than 20,000 square foot, is being considered as compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. We don't understand a traffic study that estimates an additional 180 trips per peak hour and is based on a simple reference chart and justifies building a right turn lane and extending the left turn lane off of Highway 100 onto Cox Pike. We don't understand why, given the restrictive covenants an HOA often imposes on where residents can park vehicles, there's been so much discussion during the work sessions on driveways and driveway configurations. Finally, we don't understand why Mr. McGowan, who has mentioned Otter Creek subdivision multiple times as examples of his home construction, and while I understand the need to cite a local example of his work, I wonder if Mr. McGowan's aware that the Jones Company and Otter Creek Holdings LLC are currently involved in a federal litigation regarding violations of the Clean Water Act. I want to make sure that our position is very clear. Our position is, the pod, the 168 homes with majority on lower density lots, does not fit within our neighborhood. We move to the next slide, please. So we thought it'd be relevant to associate our concerns with items in the current zoning ordinance and see how they might relate. As you may or may not know, Article 10, which is solely concerned with the planned overlay district development or a pod, states in the general provisions that must be consistent with the current comprehensive plan and compatible with general development provisions. It also states that it will not significantly interfere with the use and enjoyment of other land. Furthermore, in Article 10, 206.4, it states that a planned overlay district development shall be harmonious and not conflict with the surrounding residential neighborhoods. We'd like to present examples of how this development would interfere with the use and enjoyment of other land and conflicts with the surrounding neighborhood, namely Bowie Park and the Cox Run subdivision. We'll show examples of interference in the form of potential increases in traffic, water runoff, and potential harm of houses being in such close proximity to the park. At this time, we'd like to discuss traffic. And it's my pleasure to introduce Jan White, resident of the Cox Run subdivision, who lives on Cox Run Drive. Jan and her husband Mackey sat for hours in February and counted cars to get an idea of the daily trips that come through our subdivision.
Good evening. My name's Jan White and my address is 7335 Cox Run Drive. We completed a traffic monitoring earlier this year in February and determined, based on the developers' proposed 168 homes, this will create an influx traffic from the current 178 vehicles to 765 vehicles per day. Additionally, with an increase in school bus runs, this is not the only cause a steady stream, this will not only cause a steady stream on Cox Run Drive, but it will continue onto Cox Pike. From there, it will continue on a much slower rate, backing up traffic at the traffic light on Highway 100. From there, it continues on Highway 100 to and from Nashville. We currently have an afternoon slow pace when driving through Fairview. This issue will become even more congested for our two-lane Main Street. Excuse me. So has there been an attempt to alleviate the traffic nightmare by the 2040 plan? This is another issue that not only affects Cox Run subdivision, but it affects everyone, everyone traveling through Fairview. We realize progress and new homes and new neighborhoods are inevitable and create a big concern. Why not start with a city plan for growth prior to a submission of a developer's plan? Though in closing, I'd like to also add, my husband and I moved to Fairview a little over a year ago. As a native Nashvillian, I have really never desired to leave hometown, but we needed a change. As the increase in crime and, yes, the unbelievable increase in traffic, it all seemed to be taking a toll on us. So we moved to Fairview. Cox Run was a perfect fit for us. We love our neighbors and we love Bowie Park. So I ask you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, please do not vote in favor of this rezoning. Thank you. And now I turn this over to Mackey White.
My name is Mackey White. I live at 7335 Cox Run Drive. We showed you the impact of this large subdivision to Cox Run Drive in our small neighborhood. In one day, over a seven-hour period, the traffic goes from 178 to 765, accounting for 168 homes. We have a next slide up there. This will just graphically show you the increase. The blue line is the traffic study. The orange line is how much it'll increase. And the gray line is like the total traffic we anticipate. The developers suggested that our subdivision would add about 180 vehicles to the traffic. That's like saying, at 168 homes, that's like saying one vehicle for household leaves and doesn't come back. We further submit that on other day, during the seven, peak hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM, that Cox Pike traffic would increase about 2/3rds and Highway 100 would probably increase about 10%. This creates a larger stress to our neighborhood and a further stress throughout Fairview. Even at some future date, if a straight shot is made from Highway 100 to Highway 100 from the subdivision, another traffic light is required. Then you would have a light at Cox Pike, the new light, and one located at Publix. This is entirely too much traffic funneled into a small section of Fairview. You would have red light to red light traffic jams, more accidents, frustration, not to mention many more school bus runs. When we first heard of the massive project, we were angered. The more we learned, we were concerned. Now our concerns turn to fear. Our fears are the threat to our safety, security, and peacefulness in our community. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Diane Miller.
Good evening. I am Diane Miller and I live on 7415 Master Shane Road. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the stormwater drainage issues that we face in Cox Run. And earlier this week, I did email you all some photos and some images of what we're currently facing as a formal complaint. And a lot of what we will discuss tonight is actually what was on that presentation with an additional pictures. If we could go to the next slide, please. I'm sorry. If we could go to the next one, I think we're a little out of order here. Next one. Next, please. Thank you. It's important to point out that many neighbors have been experiencing issues for years. The drainage system for Cox Run is inadequate to manage the stormwater runoff that we currently get even on a regular rainy day. We face flooding, erosion, foundation shifting, and mold. This has been very costly for families. Even with modifications and repairs, many homes still face significant problems. The bottom line is we cannot sustain any more water, not one single drop. With the severity of the current issues, anything more would be devastating. Here are some pictures, and actually, this is my personal home. This is what we faced on July 12th, 2020. We had three feet of flooding. You can see the finished basement garage area that we had just done and spent our hard-earned money on. And you can see what we woke up to that morning about 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. And the water line there on the door, you can see that. And you can see, too, the creek behind our house, what it looks like on a regular day versus what it looks like on just a standard rainy day. So we, it obviously gets full very quickly. And you can go to the next slide, please. Here, we have some images of a culvert that's really full, sandbagging for a garage, and it still actually does not keep the water out, but they do that pretty much every time that it rains. Cracks in the driveway or the foundation. They also have cracks in the home. And then, of course, the erosion that's occurring in the yards just because of the water buildup over the years and the water, stormwater runoff. Next slide, please. And here as well, you can see that water has entered this home, just moisture that's coming up on the wood. And of course, there are items that have gotten wet just because it's been stored in a certain area of their home. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Click one more time. And this is a pipe that's underneath the road, actually. And you can see that it's cracked, it's broken. There's a hole in this pipe that goes underneath the street and into this, underneath the yard. And you can see the erosion that's just like building up kind of towards the fence there. So the more that this water gets to that point, the more that it's going to erode. And this, again, is just a regular rainy day. You can see how much water that is. That is a significant amount of water. And that's not probably even the worst that it's gotten. Like, again, this is just a regular rainy afternoon. You can go to the next slide, please. This is photos of the side of this property and the back of it, the one that had the culvert with a lot of water. You can see that the water here just sort of flows all over the place. There's just a lot of water coming through. And that is what we wanted to present to you all today. It's just the amount of water that we get. It's just a lot. And quite frankly, I just don't know how we could really just handle any more. So you can go to the next picture because they built this bridge and it's barn lumber and it's heavy wood. And this actually was washed away this past weekend from the rain. That's how much water came through there and the force that it came with. And so this is what we're facing currently. So with that, I just wanted to say that the concern is the elevation of this property sitting adjacent to ours. And because it's at a higher elevation, we are concerned that that stormwater is just, gravity is going to take it down and slope into our neighborhood because it's right next to it. There's only a 25-foot buffer and that is just inadequate to handle any additional stormwater. It's incredibly important to consider the additional amount of water and the force that will come into our division if this property or this development goes in, without addressing these issues that we currently have to deal with this. And I just, I'm sorry. Knowing that we already have these significant problems, our question is rhetorical is, you know, are you willing to take that risk in worsening these issues because it's very significant? So before there's approval for any adjacent properties to us, we just really ask for the assistance of the Board of Commissioners and the mayor to see the problems that we have on hand and address those issues before potentially bringing more to it and adding more problems because we're just, we're at a stopping point. You know, we've just topped out on the water drainage and we've already discussed that there are significant water problems just in Fairview in general. And I think these pictures are proof of that. So with that, thank you very much for your time. And I was going to pass it on to Mark if he's had any more comments.
I'm back. I'll be brief. I just want to take you through a couple of these slides. These were the slides I was referencing, but with the order of events here tonight, I simply didn't know if we were actually going to see this or not. Can we advance the slide, please? All right. So from my perspective, again, I've expressed to you already my familiarity with the trail. So I want to talk a little bit about the impact on Bowie Park. I'm also very visually minded. I think the pictures do a lot. And being able to tour this with folks and see this firsthand, I think these pictures really give you some perspective of what we're talking about. Can we go to the next slide, please? So this is at the perimeter trail and where the Red Bud Trail come together. There are two points in a subsequent slide that you're going to see. And the reason I said this is a strategic problem with, it's unique to this property is it is an elevation problem. Water runs downhill. We all know it. There's two essentially watershed points on this property. This is one of them. This is right where the two cul-de-sacs, as best I can tell, are proposed to go. This is the water that you see on a regular rainy day there right now. It already overflows the piping that, where it crosses the perimeter trail. And when it overflows, it's already, technical term, downcutting in geography, right? It is cutting down the Red Bud Trail because it's following the trail as it is. Can we go to the next slide, please? This is the second point. I'll just call it Point B for sake of argument. This is further along on the perimeter trail and this is closer to where the proposed six lots would be on the back. Again, the water comes off of this property essentially in two points that you'll see, and I'll give you arrows on a different graphic here momentarily. But this is existing water. If you walk this perimeter trail right now at this spot, you will see, and I'm not sure who is doing it, I know Keith and Mike are out there all the time. They do a great job trying to do what they can to deal with the existing challenges in that park. But somebody's already been out there with a backhoe, trying to redirect the water into this creek to get it to run one space as is. That's no additional water coming off of it to this point. It already overflows the trail. It floods it, makes it virtually impassable. Next slide, please. Next slide? So this slide actually just covers some context, put some numbers with your slide deck here or with the visual. The calculation there off of 112 acres is about 3 million gallons of water. So when you think about that, with that much land and doing the math on that, right? You've got about 25 million pounds of water or gallons of water coming off of this thing. And there are some statistics here to just give you perspective as you think about that. Next slide, please. So the arrows that are pointing off to the right of the slide is what I showed you the first set of slides. And off to the left is the second, so Point A and Point B. Those are your two key watersheds. And again, as you look at those property or as you looked at those slides, hopefully one of the things that you caught there was the uphill appearance. Can we go to the next slide, please? So those two points are essentially coordinating in between those cul-de-sacs where those drainage basins are. They're right in that vicinity. So when I told you that I had a concern over this personally on the strategic piece to this, just locationally, when you put detention ponds or retention ponds, whatever they're proposing there, essentially, all that water is flowing downhill off of that entire property into one of these two places. It's going to flow into those ponds. At some point, those ponds are going to fill. At some point, those ponds are going to overflow. If we have torrential rains like we had now, you can do the math, you can make it look good, but at some point, they're going to overflow. We see it every day in Tennessee. At some point, they're going to need maintenance. And that's what I was referring to when I said long-term types of risks, right? Who's responsible for taking care of all that stuff over time? Who's responsible for monitoring it? What kinds of additional liabilities does it create? Next slide, please. So pollutions, toxins, this is pretty straightforward, obviously. This is the Otter Creek development from an image standpoint and what water is doing there. But we all know that over time, the stormwater is dragging oils, all kinds of other contaminants. It's dragging that into the park. Again, this is a nature preserve. It is going to release toxins. That's obviously a huge risk at a strategic level. Do you really want to take that at this point? Next slide, please. So you've got the wildlife, you've got the noise, you've got the light. If you've ever hiked in that park, you have a lot of really unique kinds of animals in there. You've got barred owls in there left and right. You've actually got a piliated woodpecker in there. I don't know how many of you've ever seen one, but they're a pretty rare species. You've got deer running around in there. You've probably got more deer running around right now because... You've probably got more deer running around right now because Middle Tennessee have, has come through and done their, their biannual sort of clear out amongst the power lines. But the bottom line is inevitably, all the storm water is just going to aggravate the problem, create risks to species, the wildlife, which again, I go back to the historical aspect. A lot of what was created in that park was created by the Bowie family to actually create the wildlife that this is creating a risk to. Next slide, please. So this gives you a visual on those points A and B. And I think this is the key when you think about this 125-foot kind of an idea. If you look at that detention pond on the one cul-de-sac, it is right there. And you are literally going to be staring at that. I'm not sure how you could possibly, with the cutting methods they're proposed and with the ponding and what you would have to do to build that up. If you physically look at it, there is no way that that could aesthetically be appealing from the park side of the property line, sitting that close to the boundary. It just doesn't make sense. All those homes in the cul-de-sac, you're walking along a nature park, you're wanting to enjoy nature and you're going to be looking at the back of at least a dozen plus homes. Next slide, please. So this is just a superimposed kind of an image. This is on the non-cul-de-sac. This is on the flat side of that proposed development. So this is that back six property, if you will, looking up. Vice Mayor Anderson, this is where we took the photo when we were out and about. So I don't know if you have photos from, from your perspective that you've shared or will share at any point along the way, but you can see perspective-wise, this is looking up. Again, what I want to draw your attention to is the topography. And if you're out hiking in, in a park, is this really what you kind of want to see when you're in a park, right? Next slide, please. This is at that first point. And literally, the bottom of that photograph is the property line. So when you're taking that photo, you are literally looking right across at this. Now, this does not have superimposed on it what catch basins or detention ponds, whatever they're being proposed as would look like. But essentially, you can see how it strips out all of the appearance, all the aesthetics, puts all the houses right there. And again, this is absent of the ponds. Next slide, please. So 180, or 168 homes, high density. The buffer, it's got the, the suspects that you would expect, right? The catastrophic types of damage. You've got ecosystems there. You've got the destructions of the trails, the existing streams overwhelming them. Bottom line, it comes down to, is this, is this a strategic worth, risk worth taking? And I think the question here is, is really a simple one at its core, right? This is about density. Again, I'd go back to what I said earlier. I don't think, I'm not anti-development. I don't think that you can't develop the property. I just think this is the wrong type of development for that specific property. The unique characteristics of that property are not consistent with the spirit of prior agreements, nor are they consistent with all of these risks. And it runs a tremendous risk down the road that's going to be irrecoverable in many respects. And it's just going to create nightmares over time. And it's also going to erode the potential value that people see in the park that move here for it or that visit for it. Next slide, please. So at this point, some information here, just simply as a reminder about, from the Bowie family. These, this is in reference to my comments earlier about sort of the spirit of agreements. When we made the, the agreement with the Bowie family, this is what the agreement is, this is what it looks like. And I would just ask you all to carefully evaluate, are we really honoring the spirit of that with this particular development? If the answer to the question is to change the density for developing that property. And again, I just want to reinforce that idea. What is the strategy for that property? I don't think it's that you deny any and all development. I just don't think this is the right type of a development, which I think is what a lot of this evidence just helps to show. So with that, turn it over to next speaker.
Hello, my name is Joe Grable. I'm at 7359 Cox Pike. I wanted to add a couple of items that came in late. I talked to a Sarah O'Rear from the Land Trust of Tennessee, asking her opinion on how she thought of this project. And this is what she wrote back to me in an email. She says, "We are, we encourage the city to require a natural buffer of at least 100 feet along the park boundary, buffers of at least 75 feet on all water drainage ways that flow into the park and into Little Turnbull Creek, as well as requiring adequate storm water detention to reduce water runoff and sediment erosion from the development Obviously, they have vested interest because they created the park. The other thing I wanted to bring up is our master plan from 2015 that the city leaders put together. I hope they look at it once in a while. I want to read from a couple of items here, just to make it short. Agricultural practices in the 1920s and 1930s by family-owned farms did not include techniques used today to prevent erosion and soil depletion. Dr. Bowie was faced with barren land scorched by deep, long gullies that carried off 20 to 30 tons of topsoil a year during rains. Accoed with a bulldozer and pine ceilings, Dr. Bowie began a reclamation process that this plan proposes to continue well into the next century. There's a recommendation for priorities in the, for the city. Says, "Finish the update for the trail maintenance plan and make updates every three to five years." After spending several years rerouting, building water bars and diverting erosion runs, the pack for the most part, as a environmentally sound, sustainable trail system. In order to keep the trails at this point, Bowie Nature Park Trail Maintenance Plan should support current and future uses with minimal impact to the park's ecosystem, produce little or no soil loss or movement while allowing vegetation inhabit the area, allow for pruning or removal of certain plants for maintenance, avoid adversely affecting the park's wildlife, accommodating existing use while allowing only appropriate future use, require little rerouting and minimal long-term maintenance." Pass this along in case I might review it. I guess we could do the next slide. This is part of the master plan. You can review it. City of Fairview envisions Bowie Nature Park as one of the finest examples of nature parks in the state of Tennessee. By showcasing its natural beauty and unique cultural heritage, this park will offer to both present and future generations, a place where people can experience the natural processes and a variety of ecosystems. By enhancing this park, we can provide the environmentally compatible recreation for the city residents while teaching respect and care for the land, natural resources. This is another example of, from the master plan about all the affected species that are here. Next slide. This is from the 2008 easement agreement that came up. These are still state species that are affected by, considered endangered or rare species. Next slide. I think we passed one. Land trust was created to protect against what happened before. The land was clear-cut before. The life work of Evangeline Bowie and her sister reforested the land and turned it to a nature preserve. Will it be clear-cut again? Is history repeating itself? If there is soil erosion, trail, environmental damage to Bowie Park, does a city have the expertise and additional budget to fix the damage properly? Is the City of Fairview willing to do a revised environmental review from qualified professionals before voting to establish what the effects to Bowie Park will be? Next slide. Here's some comments from the citizens of Fairview. There's currently 24, 30 signatures as of 12/21 today. About the petition that's out, you all know about it. With that, I would like to introduce Richard Branch. Richard has firsthand experience of Bowie Nature Park and its growth.
Let's just raise up a little bit. Next slide. I'm Richard Branch. That's not the right one.
Tell us your address, Richard.
I live at 7327 Cox Run Drive.
Thank you, sir.
And I have the same concerns as my neighbors. But I'm here tonight because at the end of the day, at the end of it all, there's only, there's really one question. What is the right thing to do? What is the right thing to do? I knew Ms. Bowie as a boy growing up in this community. I knew, I knew Ms. Bowie, just like Mayor Rainey. You probably, I know you knew her. Barry, my classmate, I know he knew her. I'm not a betting man, but if I was, I would bet there's less people in this room tonight that knew Ms. Bowie than there are more. And my life is more enriched by knowing this lady. She always put the Fairview community first. I give you two quick examples and I'm standing to be corrected on any of this, okay? But when there was a place for the new library to be built, she donated the land for the new library. She saw this as a good thing. There's nothing bad about a library anyway, I wouldn't think. She was putting her community first. She was all for that. One Sunday morning when I was a kid going to church, let me back up just a second. The new people in our community, the France plant has, hadn't always been where it's at today. As a kid, it burned, used to be on the other side of Tractor Supply. If you're going down to Highway, Tractor Supply is on the right. The France plant used to be on the left. It burnt down one Sunday morning. She, with her permission, they built it where it's at today, only because she put her community first again. A lot of her neighbors worked there and they had threatened maybe to take it out of our city if they didn't find a place to build. But she gave the approval for that. And that's the reason it's where it's at today. Ms. Bowie, as a kid, we used to fish on what is now Bowie Park. And she charged us a dollar. She taught, didn't want to be mean. And she also said, "Make sure you pick up your trash before you leave." But you know what she did with that dollar? Over time, she collected from us youngins. She went and bought little pine trees, little ceilings, and she planted them herself. And some of the very pine trees you see in that park today is some of the ones she planted. I'd rather have one tree that the lady herself planted than a hundred on a barrier trying to cover up something. Just give me that one tree she planted. You know, when we all leave this world, we're probably going to leave something that's dear to all our hearts. It could be a piece of jewelry, car, a house, but we're going to leave it for our loved ones to take care of. And there's not a person in this room, myself included, that you would want to see your loved ones abuse it, dirty it up, not take care of it. Well, Ms. Bowie left this park for me, for you, for all of us to take care of. She entrusted us to do that. And as we used her land while we was a kid fishing, she taught us responsibility. To be, be responsible. I hope and pray that this board be responsible when it comes to the decisions about this park and our community. Thank you. And I yield to Mayor.
I'm Meredith Kaiser and I live at 7321 Cox Run Court. Good evening, Mayor Rainey and Commissioners. And thank you, Richard, for that amazing insight. And what a legacy to the City of Fairview and for the Board of Commissioners to uphold. And you've heard from Richard, who is a longtime resident of Fairview. I represent another demographic. I'm a very new resident. I've been here just over a year and I'm a retiree. Retirees are not specifically targeted by Fairview to grow Fairview. But you should remember that baby boomers are retiring and are on the increase and should not be ignored. Our own move to Middle Tennessee was about grandchildren. Isn't everything about grandchildren? Our health care, but also our need to give up the family farm. There comes a time when you have to move closer to family. And we spent a long time looking around. Our daughter and her husband and our grandchildren live in Franklin and they have lived there for 14 years. And we have been traveling to and fro across the plateau for school events and then suddenly, more recently, for our own medical care, when we found that the majority of our doctors were at Vanderbilt. And we started looking and we looked and we looked. Our colleagues at Vanderbilt told us to look in Brentwood. Our children told us to look in Franklin. But we wanted something that was more representative of where we came from, from our Highway 61 experience in Anderson County. And we discovered Fairview and we love what Fairview is. And we have great hopes for the vision that you, the Commissioners, have for your city. We, one of the reasons that we really liked Fairview was the park. The park is important to us. We may be considered older than dirt, but that's fine because I want to talk about dirt. Dirt seems to be the root of most of our concerns here. Now, you have to understand that my classes in geology, soil science, and land utilization were taken well over half a century ago. But you know what? Rocks don't change in 50 years. What has changed is technology and the way that we are able to move huge quantities of rock and soil around to meet our needs. Not always a good thing because when you start messing with Mother Nature, you might not appreciate the result. not appreciate the result. You've heard concerns related to stormwater, drainage, and land utili- and the way land utilization exists today. These come, become very, very real when topography changes. When you look at the submitted conceptual plan, in order to get that many houses squeezed into the available space, you would have to cut a swath right off the top of the hill. You see that from the topographical slide that Mark showed you. The construction that is necessary to make that kind of a development involves a technique known as cut and fill. And so it doesn't look much like the design that you saw in the slide, but it's a concept that is provided for this rezoning request, but the reality may be something completely different. For example, we've heard about today, several people mentioned Otter Creek. Now, if you were to go back and look at when the 2017 design for Otter Creek came before your planning commission, you would realize that what came in as conceptual plan in 2017 bears very little relationship to what is the layout today. So where are we? You see, we're back to where we began. We have brought to you examples of how we feel this proposed development would interfere with the use and enjoyment of the land, would conflict with the surrounding neighborhood, and especially impact Bowie Park. We believe that we've adequately demonstrated that the city of Fairview deserves a more appropriate development for this property. We thank you for this opportunity to voice our concerns with regard to the rezoning request, and tonight I call on the mayor and the Commissioners to show prudence and to deny this zoning request. Thank you for your time and attention.
I believe that we have a nine o'clock built-in break. Is that correct?
Mayor, we do. So if it's clear, pleasure of the board, I would suggest that if there are no one else to speak, then at the closure of the public hearing, then you, you take that break to come back and reconsider item E2.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak during this public hearing? Then we will close the public hearing on item A2. We will have our nine o'clock break, five minutes. We seem to have lost one Commissioner and a city manager and a city attorney, so we've It appears that our city Commissioner, who is so fascinated by worksheets and spreadsheets and sales, would be able to know when it's 9:05. I'm so sorry, I couldn't resist.
Actually, actually, I'm city manager, not city Commissioner.
Is that what I called you?
Yes. It's a common mistake that takes place throughout the community.
Yes, I agree. I'm so sorry. Let me promote you back to city manager.
Occasionally, I get called mayor, and I ignore that one as well.
There's so many things I could say, but you know what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Has anyone seen Commissioner Lucas? We seem to have lost him, and low and behold, here he appears. And our city attorney.
He is.
He's run away? I'm sorry, I demoted you to city Commissioner.
That's a, apology accepted.
Is there anyone else to speak in the public hearing for this item? If not, then we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you will read the ordinance.
Item E2. Second and final reading of ordinance 2020-29. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 124.43 acres of property consisting of map 043 parcel 006.00 and map 043 parcel 026.00 located at Wayne's Lane and Mangrum Lane from RS40 Single Family Low Density Residential to R20 Single Family Medium Density Residential. Planned overlay development and approving a master development plan. Owners Cory Groves and Johnny Groves.
Do I hear a motion? Is there a motion? Hearing no motion, the agenda item dies? Is that correct procedure, Mr. Collins?
Mayor, if there's a no motion, obviously, there's no second, then the matter before you dies unless it's brought up at a, at a later time.
Okay.
The matter's passed on one, for one reading, so it has to be voted on one way or the other. So if it doesn't, if it's not voted on tonight, it'll have to be voted on at a later date. So there has to be some action taken. You can't just ignore an action taken, an item that's on the agenda once it's passed on first reading.
Procedurally, can he speak?
You're the chairman of the body, so you can recognize him if you like.
Yes, sir.
I'm David McGowan, president of Region Homes, and we're the main, going to be the main developer of property. We heard several comments tonight, and one of was to propose a 100-foot buffer along the park. I personally believe what we'd like to do is propose that you basically have a motion to, what would be the proper motion, to, to defer this item to another meeting. Let us meet with your planning staff to probably, and to develop that 100-foot buffer if you feel like that is something that would probably allow us to proceed with this development. And so that is something that we'd like to propose this time. And there's a couple of other things that will probably change in the meantime, but that is one of the items we'd like to, that we would like to request it to be deferred.
Then I will make a motion to defer this item until the first meeting in May. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mayor, I would, I just want to try and have some open discussion and, and based off some things that I've continued to try and review. The calculations, the overall density or impact on this property is 1.5 units per acre. So essentially, it has a less, a lesser impact of any of our R20 developments out there on a public sewer with, that has no greenway or, or green space or parks, dog parks and things like that. And so overall, if it was 20 years ago and this was submitted as an R20 with public sewer, I think you might get a similar lot yield on this property. One thing from the, the plan in the late 90s, the 2020 plan, to the plan today that we continue to discuss, is the infinite need for a town center, for the, the feel of a community of, of an anchor. And so this piece ultimately is kind of starting to create a vision. When you try and have strategic growth, you try and, you try and eye a growth corridor, you try and understand, you know, is this a development area? Does it have infrastructure? Does it have sewer? Does it have electric? Are we able to service it from the city standpoint? This piece ultimately is the key to continue. There's another piece that's going to connect to this, that's going to give the city the town center, or have the opportunity to give the city the town center that we have been talking about for years. And so at some point, with this parcel, whatever it may look at, you would be able to walk to the ice cream shop. You'd be able to walk to your meeting at City Hall. You'd be able, you'd be a half a mile from Highway 100, so the pressure would be alleviate, alleviated out of Cox Run. It'd be alleviated out of Cox Pike. It, it is, it's, we talked about vision, we talked about, overall, every piece is, we, I feel like everything I've been told is, it is, almost it, it had, it is sent to us as if this was just submitted to the city, and the city put it in front of us, and we discussed it. We have a staff now today that is reviewing things from a standpoint that we've never seen before, from a long-term vision of how if this piece is developed this way, how will it connect to the next piece? How will it affect their surrounding areas? So it just felt like there's more credit due to our staff than just, it's not just something that was just pushed through. All these things and questions, like the stormwater is illegal. It will be, it will be calculated down to the quarter inch that will come out and exit that property. I mean, you know, I, I served on the park board before. The park is near and dear to me. I helped build the original playground back in the day. Now I'm here trying to fundraise it for a new one. I don't want to harm the park. I have no intention for the park, but I do think there are things like this. Maybe it looks different, maybe the buffer's better, but I think there is an opportunity, a great opportunity here for one of the most desirable communities that Fairview's ever seen. I, I think it ultimately, and it could tie to a next piece that could really create that anchor that, that we've all sought for since the late 90s. And so there is some great potential here. I agreed to defer. Maybe, you know, we can address some of the buffer things we've continued to talk about and dig in, but I think this is a great opportunity, and, and I don't think it's an all-negative as it seems. I don't think it's going to have the, as negative impact as, as come off.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor. Commissioner Butler, I, I agree. I, I think there is a neighborhood that would fit for this property that would be just, and I, I think it would be a good steward of the property of Bowie Nature Park. When we start talking about density from going to one subdivision to a next, I, I was kind of sold on a bill of goods from a developer when I purchased our neighborhood, and they said it was going, going to be one density, and sure enough, they added on to the subdivision, and, and it wasn't, which kind of changed that, the dynamic of the subdivision. So I've heard that a lot from the, the folks in Cox Run, that they wanted to keep this density the same. And Commissioner Butler, I, you spoke well on that. What is the density truly? But it, it's also, the people that live in Cox Run, they want a like neighborhood. So I would like to defer as well. There, there is potential for this, this property, and I think there is a common ground that we can get to eventually. I don't think we're there yet. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the density in this subdivision is the same or less density than Cox Run?
Mayor, if you look at the, the number of homes on the footprint of Cox Run compared to the proposed number of homes on the footprint of the development you have before you, the overall density for the new development is slightly less than the current density for the Cox Run subdivision.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye. The item is deferred until the second meeting in May. On the agenda then. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As, as a point of reference, so everyone understands, the item E, as of tonight, has had its public hearing. So unless there is a request from this body, then when it reappears on the agenda, it will reappear as an action item and not reappear as containing a public hearing.
Okay, everyone understands that. So tonight was the public hearing. When it comes back on the agenda for the second meeting in May, there will not be a public hearing. It will just be an agenda item without public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's accurate, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
That's accurate.
Oh, thank you. Okay, new business. 11A, Initial Certificate of Compliance for Good Times Wine and Spirits LLC, 2276 Fairview Boulevard, owner Anthony E. Vincent. Is Mr. Vincent here?
Hello, Anthony Vincent, 7464 Penn Grove Lane. Good to see you all.
Thank you for coming. So we're here to, for your certificate of compliance.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Vincent? Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm recusing myself from item B and C.
B and C, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I won't forget you're gone this time, I promise. 11B, First reading of ordinance 2021-06. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 10.26 acres of property consisting of map 018 parcel 038-02, located on Highway 96 North from RM8 multifamily residential to RM20 multifamily residential. Owner Bevins Stephen Hagen Joint Venture. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Is there anyone here to speak on this? Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Pascarella. I'm with Pearl Street Partners. We're the applicant for this community, as well as the, the next item on the agenda as well, ma'am, for first reading. I know that a few of you were present for the planning commission where we presented, and if I may just take a moment, I know it's been a long evening, but I'll, I'll just, if I may just give you a few, make a few remarks. Our company, Pearl Street Partners, is local to Middle Tennessee. We've been in business for 16 years. I, myself, have been in, in the business of creating communities for about 32 years. We, we are residents of Middle Tennessee and have raised our daughters here. Our communities throughout Middle Tennessee are, we, we really try, really pride ourselves in a high degree of vision, focus, resident experience, and really delivering on the promises and the plans that we, we rang forth. Commissioner Dawson, I, I, you know, the, the, what mention you made earlier about changing the character of the community, that's something that we hold really near and dear in our hearts to deliver what we would promise both to city commissions as well as to the neighborhoods that we, that we work in. We've been visiting Fairview for the past two years. We, we know that growth is coming in this direction, and I have a, I have a high degree of passion for this business, and I've had my whole career. We, we've been watching and studying, and we believe we had identified an opportunity here in, in Fairview. As home prices in Fairview rise, I think it's more, more difficult to find attainable housing. It's not affordable, it's not subsidized, but it's priced at a, at a, at a, at a price point that allows residents who might not be able to afford the average price of a for sale home today to still live in your beautiful community. And so what we are asking for your approval on through these, these next two readings is to allow us to take a property that is already zoned for a combination of commercial, high and medium density, and revise that zoning to allow for a multifamily apartment community market rate, not affordable, not income restricted, but, but market rate with the latest and nicest finishes for homes, as well as a with the latest and nicest finishes for homes as well as amenities, as well as townhomes that would be also part of this mixed residential community that would, that would be targeted at price points that would allow for, whether it be young singles, couples, or even empty nesters, to live in a community with maintenance taken care of for them, but also at a price point that would be below the average price point for today's homes in Fairview. And we've provided a presentation, again, given the time and, and how late it is, I'm happy to walk through it with you, but I think you've also been given a copy of it. Is my right, Scott?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I've provided the paper copy, handout earlier tonight, and provided them early with the electronic copy.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, sir.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this, but I also, again, want to be respectful of your time. The last thing I'll say though is that as we've been researching and talking with staff who's been really helpful to help us get oriented to your community and understand the vision, as we've studied your land use plan and spoken to planning commissioners as well as some of you, some of the things that we've, we've discovered and been told are things to be very careful to focus on and be cognizant of, three in particular that were identified and I think I would just like to briefly address. Traffic is one. We heard some of these things, of course, tonight, stormwater, and focus and sensitivity to the natural environment. And I would just like to say that as far as traffic goes, again, we believe we strategically identified this parcel in part due to the fact that it is on a state road, Highway 96, that's designed for high levels of volume of traffic. We're also approximately one mile from Interstate 40. We do believe that a large number of our residents will commute to work either up I-40 to Bellevue, Nashville, or areas around it. From a stormwater standpoint, again, I've been developing for quite some time and, and I'm well aware of the restrictions of TDEC and other environmental agencies that are very careful to make sure that we do not allow one gallon of water to exit our property post-development that wouldn't have, have exited it pre-development. And our engineers are, are pretty careful about making sure that's always the case. I would invite you to talk or interview to any of the public officials of the communities here in the Nashville area where we have developed, and I, I would, I would hope that they would tell you that we've done a good job at, at managing and, and delivering on those engineering requirements. And then finally, the natural environment. I'm a, I'm a huge lover of horticulture. I believe that creating a natural environment and, and a wonderful streetscape is just as important as creating beautiful architecture. And, and so we look for opportunities to create and maintain and preserve natural habitats as well as create beautiful scenic streetscapes. We have some, some, some beautiful areas on this property, as you'll see from the site plan, that we hope to, to really celebrate, the natural environment and, and work with. We've got over 40 acres of land and, and we feel like we're, we're pretty spread out and didn't, didn't attack, you know, didn't approach it with too much density. With that, I'll just close by saying that I appreciate the opportunity you've given me to speak before you tonight. We're very excited to be here. We hope you'll give us an opportunity to, to create a community in Fairview.
Mayor, I had a question for him.
Yes.
So where is the, the closest like establishment that you have or development?
Certainly. Well, in terms of, one community that showcases all of our, all of our businesses, if you will, we, we develop multifamily communities, we develop single-family neighborhoods, and we have a home building company. Lockwood Glen, which is a neighborhood in Franklin on Carruthers Parkway, we started that community back in 2008 and it's really just finishing up now. It's about, it's over 300 acres. It's, it was approved for about 800 residential homes, which included 240 apartments and then the balance for sale. And we, we really, we really managed the entirety of it. So the master planning, the entitlements, the architectural controls, the development, we developed, we built about a third of the homes, we built the multifamily homes and all of the natural amenities and things like that. We worked with the city on, on dedicating parkland. And so that, that would really be our, that's really our flagship community. Just up the road in Bellevue, we were fortunate to, we partnered with a company called Crescent Communities from Charlotte, North Carolina, and all of our multifamily efforts thus far have been in collaboration with them. One example of that is right up the road in One Bellevue Place. So we worked in collaboration with Crosland, which master planned and, and was the master developer of that mixed-use redevelopment of the mall. We were responsible for developing the multifamily. So that's at the, on the backside of, of the community, you know, on the north end. We are, we are just finishing construction on one just up the road from that in West Nashville, near the, the Lowe's and Walmart at the interchange of I-40 and Charlotte Pike. So those are just a few examples.
So one other question, and I don't know if you have the specifics on this. What is the percentage of retirees that move into these multifamily dwellings?
It, it always depends on the location.
Sure.
It's not a, it's not a large number. You know, it's, and partly, it's partly due to, in many cases, you know, they would, I, we actually, you know, the townhomes that we have here, we think might be more conducive because it's zero maintenance, master bedroom, you know, in some cases will be on the ground floor, there's no stairs. In general, we may find five to 10% of our multifamily communities attract empty nesters. One Bellevue Place is a good example. We, we did have, and that was partly because we live, you know, in Bellevue, the average age, I think, is either 47 or 52, and I can't remember, it's been a couple of years, I apologize. But they attend our, our meetings and, and really, you know, we talked to a lot of them and, and as a result, you know, we, we designed a couple of buildings with elevators to, you know, that were more conducive to folks that wanted to avoid stairs. It required more rent, you know, they, we, we charged a much higher premium for those because, to make up for the cost of the elevators and the other facilities. But I still don't think we ended up with a, a lot of empty nesters as a result of that, but a few more than we might have had without it. I hope I answered your question.
Right, you did. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I was, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Pascarella for several hours one evening and he answered all of my questions. Just excited about this project. I've gone and toured several of your projects that you've got in Bellevue and Franklin. Just attention to detail, I mean, something Fairview can really be proud of out here. I'm, I'm so excited about this community. We have several income-based apartments out here. This is not that type of product and it is something that if our children want to stay here and they want, you know, to live in an apartment before they have a home, this is going to be perfect. Anyone who maybe is over that income for one of the other apartments, you know, they will have this opportunity to be in, you know, to live in an apartment community like this. But I'm just, I'm so impressed. I've, I've gone and visited, I've spoken with you, thoroughly combed over your, you know, your community and, and just what you put into it, and very proud that you've brought this to our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I, I appreciate that. I, as I, and as I told Commissioner Anderson at our meeting, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I've been blessed with having what I think are the best teachers in my career. The Walt Disney Company was one place where I think I really learned a tremendous amount about architecture, planning. Southern Land Company was the company that brought my wife and my family here to Middle Tennessee and, and, you know, West Haven is, is an incredible example of planning and architecture. And so I, I, I'm a student of the business. I love what I do, we're passionate about it. I would welcome the opportunity to meet, sit with any one of you, to, to show you photographs, host a visit to one of our neighborhoods because we, you know, we're serious about delivering on the experience for our residents. You know, our mission statement as a company, and I, I just came up with this one night when I first started the organization, you know, 16 years ago, as I was trying to, trying to think of how I could describe why I love this business and why I wanted to do what I did. And, you know, our, our mission statement is that we create places where people create memories. I hate the word units, projects, tenants, you know, those are all words that are, I, you know, I've, I avoid at all costs because these are residents, these are homes, these are neighborhoods. When I drive down one of our streets and I see a sign that says, you know, Johnny's graduating from Franklin High School, or wherever it is, that really, it means a lot to me. And, and so it's something that we're passionate about and, and I, I think it shows, and thank you very much for your, your compliment.
Also to point out, this area is zoned for this type of development, so this type of community, and it's just in a good location for, you know, people to hit the interstate and get to work. I can't say enough about it. I'm, I'm just really excited about it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing no more discussion. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item C, First Reading of Ordinance 2021-07, An Ordnance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 28.36 acres of property, consisting of map 018, Parcel 038.00, Located at 1269 Highway 96 North, From RM8 PUD, Multifamily Residential Plan Unit Development to RM8 Multifamily Residential Owner, Wellington Corporation. Is there anyone here to speak to that? Do you just want to come up and say ditto?
I'm Chris Pascarella, Pearl Street Partners. We're happy to answer any questions. We agree with all staff's comments.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second and hearing no discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item D, new business. Oh, I forgot again. First Reading of Ordinance 2021-08, Vice Mayor Anderson, I'll let you read.
Item D, First Reading of Ordinance 2021-08, An Ordnance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 48.05 acres of property, located at 7425 Crowcut Road, Williamson County Tax Map 046, Parcel 016.00 and 016.04, Rezoning Fairview Terrace, Map 046, Parcel 016 and 016.04, Currently zoning, current zoning RS40, Proposed zoning R20, Property Owner Brandon Robertson.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Attorney General Mayor, members of the Commission, Rob Ultra and SEC and a half, Mr. Robertson. This is really a, a long-range plan that's been slowly coming to fruition over the last 15 years. We're really just trying to get these last two pieces of the property, as you see, the yellow portion on the map was rezoned back when this project was initially started back in 2005, and with the recession kicking in and pushing things to the side for a while, we're looking at, trying to get the last two parcels zoned equally with the first portion on the property on the side of Aiden Branch for, for development to be consistent across the property. So appreciate your time and I'm here for any questions.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
New business 11, 11E, First Reading of Ordinance 2021-09. Vice Mayor Anderson, if you'll read, please.
An ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, to require the use of horse manure catchbags on all horses on any city-owned property. Motion to deny.
Second.
We have a motion, deny, and a second. I would like to ask, I'd like to have discussion, please. So I know that at one point in time, we had a dedicated horse trail in Bowie, and I know that we've talked about that. Is there, tell us the problems with that trail.
Mayor, I'll give you the, as I understand them, and they're, they're, to primary, the primary issue with that trail is the ability to maintain that trail. We get complaints constantly regarding the closure of trails generally. That trail, as it existed, has some pretty low spots, some other weather-related areas. It borders what is known as the Spoils' Property, which is the vacant area between Bowie Park and Walmart. That area in and of itself is an open drain system, so as that drain comes through the area, we have consistent washouts of the low spots all along that trail. Our, our ability to go back and make significant repairs for the long term for that trail is somewhat limited because of the watershed itself. The, the tributary that feeds from that area and to others, in fact, from that area, feed into Little Turnbull Creek, which is a blue water stream FEMA designated, so the city doesn't have the recourse necessary to simply reach out from time to time and make adjustments to that stream. It's a little more complicated than, than going to make a simple repair. With that, the perpetual use of that trail, as it will be dedicated to horses, is simply the damage that a, a horse or like animal can do in those lower wet spot areas. The fact that there would be used more heavily would create additional maintenance, and we're not sure we could maintain or perform in a proper manner. So with that, we would be hesitant to ask the board to consider that trail as a, an equestrian trail only.
Mayor, I've got just a, a brief comment. I think the, the equine community is important to the City of Fairview. They've been here and I believe they're good stewards. And I also believe that working together, if we identify a problem, they would be the first to raise their hand to correct the problem. I feel also that we could remedy this, and I, and I'm not sure what that looks like. I don't know if that's forming a committee with, with that group of mitigating the, the horse manure on the trails, but, but I, I think we, just, just talking with the constituents, talking with the, the community that, that rides those trails, they're serious about it and they don't want to, they, they don't want to be a, a pest, or they don't want to make people feel uncomfortable on there. So I think there's a huge opportunity, and I almost wanted this to, to go through to, to public hearings so we could hear more from them and, and talk a little bit more about how we can mitigate this and work together as a team. And I, I hope we don't limit it just to, to one trail where, you know, only hikers are in this trail. I love seeing the horses when I walk Bowie Park. I, I think it's special. So, so I, I think there's a huge opportunity here and, and I hope we do have further discussion with the community and with the city to, to mitigate this. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion?
I've received all types of emails this week. As a fellow equestrian, I race horses for a long time. I've raced barrels in Triune. I understand what those bags do if they're put on a horse. It's dangerous. The horses, if they're not used to those bags, it is more dangerous for a horse to get spooked and possibly injure someone than to not have the bag on the horse. You see horses with bags that are normally like in a city setting where they're on, you know, they have a carriage behind them, and they're walking very slowly. It's not something that's in a natural setting like the park. This, the horse manure is organic, horses eat grass, it's not dangerous to people. It dries fast and blows away if it's not cleaned up. The butterflies like it. And I know that sounds silly, but it's not. That just, you know, that just goes to the, you know, it being organic, it's not toxic. It's not like dog feces, that dogs eat meat. Meat byproduct. Their feces are dangerous to people and, and it needs to be picked up. Horse manure is not the same thing. I did my own research. I received several emails compiled with your research and my research and also the safety issues by the horses being spooked. That is the reason I put out a motion to deny. I believe that we can all work together as a group and just, you know, work together to make, make it a better, you know, situation.
Any other discussion? We have a motion to deny, to deny on the floor in a second. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item G, Bowie Park Playground Fundraising in signage. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, there's been a request for fundraising signage to be installed in the park. I'm not the, the expert on the ability to speak for exactly what that would look like. However, the request for the sign specifically, one of the locations to be, to install a sign was inside Bowie Park at the playground. We have no, no issue with the installation of the fundraising sign at the, at the park, at the playground site itself. Obviously, that location is not visible from any other property, any other neighboring property. So with, with that, we don't believe there would be an issue in our ordinance with the installation of that sign. With the installation of a similar sign at the entrance to the park where the Bowie Park sign is, as you turn onto Bowie Lake Road, the size of the sign and the length of time that the sign was requested would be outside of the city's sign ordinance. That said, the staff is not opposed to the sign or the installation of the sign. We simply would need the Board of Commissioners to ratify the installation of that sign as an action on behalf of the city so that is approved by the Board of Commissioners rather than staff, such that we can manage future requests for other similar signage in the same way that we manage a request for signage today.
Thank you. So we would need to make a motion to approve a waiver to the sign ordinance, basically?
If you were going to word it that way, I would have it specific to a city sponsored fundraising effort for the park and I would have it specific to one sign.
Okay.
Motion to approve exactly what you just said.
Second. So whatever he said, you won't hear that often. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Just a few things, Mayor, if I could just ask. One of the questions was, could we put the, the website to the Bowie Playground Build.org on the kiosk on the front of the park at the, the bottom of the sign where you can put letters? And then is it okay to put flyers, QR codes, signs and stuff through the park in the bulletin board areas and things like that? So I think this, I think the city did say it's fine. Just wanted to make sure and mention it.
Do we need, we don't need to add that to the motion, do we?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So any other discussion?
One thing, Mayor. I really, I, I feel like this is such a community effort. I feel like it being at the, you know, at the entrance to Bowie Lake Road where everyone can see it is so important. So I just really feel like, you know, we all need to come together and, you know, make this happen so that we can get our playground back.
Any other discussion?
All right, one more discussion.
Okay.
There is an event coming soon called the Big Payback. It's going to be in May, May 5th and 6th. And there's just going to be some small signs put out just for, for notification things. And so just want to add that note too. But that's the initial kind of big kickoff to start the fundraising there. So there, there will be some big payback signs. Make sure that's okay.
Just so everyone, so everyone's clear.
Yep.
The, and not a part of the motion and seconds you have on the floor, the signage for the big payback, as have been previously installed, are not in violation of the city's sign ordinance. They don't violate the length of time or the size of sign.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? So it's basically going to be a thermometer?
I think the intention, based off what I've heard, would be the, the new logo for the park and a thermometer to try and kind of inform and show, you know, like over 20 years ago when they did it originally, they showed the progress so you could drive by and always be informed and kind of see where it's at.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor to put up two signs at Bowie, one in the original playground location and one at the entrance to the road into the park that will show progress of money being raised for the project. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anders, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Item H, Bowie Park Playground Receipt of Funds. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, I have two items for you tonight regarding item H. The first is the actual holding of funds that would be contributed to the city or city sponsored fundraisers as it relates to the Bowie Park Playground. There's been some discussion in the past regarding an agreement or a preference by the city that any funds receipted for the purpose of rebuilding Playground Park, the playground and the car, the park, if those funds were be to received and held on behalf of the city by the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. Yes, that's correct. My suggestion to you, and I provided a copy that Mr. Potter has drafted, is a formal agreement between the city of Fairview and the Friends of Bowie Nature Park regarding their obligation to properly hold, maintain, secure any funds generated on behalf of the city of Fairview that they hold on behalf of the city of Fairview regarding the playground. I don't think it's enough just to verbalize an agreement and have a third party agency hold dollars that ultimately the city will be responsible for. So if there was a decision that the Board of Commissioners wanted to have the Friends of Bowie Nature Park hold dollars on behalf of the city for the park, then some agreement should be memorialized so that everyone can understand the obligations and expectations regarding the holding of those funds.
So have you of what you just said? So this is for the friends to hold the money for the city?
If, again, it's been expressed that the preference was that the Friends of Bowie Nature Park hold dollars that would have been contributed to the city for the Bowie Park Playground project. This agreement that I had before you would secure those dollars such that the city could be guaranteed that those dollars are available. It will require the friends to obtain certain insurances, to provide certain reports, to provide certain audits so that the city can ensure that any dollars collected on behalf of the city and held on behalf of the city are secure.
So this will be a third party person holding city money?
Correct. That's what's been discussed in the past. My preference is that not take place.
I was going to say, I would like to make a motion to not do this.
Yeah, my, my preference is that the city not engage in any activity where any third party would be agreed upon to hold city dollars for a city project. Again, that's my preference. That's not your, your preference maybe. The board can act as they choose. But my suggestion would be that any dollars collected on behalf of the city be held by the city and be accounted for by the city.
So do we need to make a motion to deny this proposal?
No, ma'am, there's no motion to, there's nothing to, to approve or deny. My suggestion is that if the Board of Commissioners were to vote to approve, that the Friends of Bowie Nature Park be the holder of dollars on behalf of the city for the city's playground. If that was be a resolution adopted or preference approved by the planning, by the Board of Commissioners, then the Board of Commissioners should also expect that this agreement be held to secure those dollars.
Okay.
Is it okay that a nonprofit fundraises for this? I guess.
Yes, so there's a secondary part to this, this conversation as well. The first conversation relates to the holding of dollars that should, should be held by the city of Fairview. My, my, my belief is that any dollars raised on behalf of or by the city of Fairview should be held by the city of Fairview and accounted for. The second part of this that I would, so that's one, the receipt of funds that were raised on behalf of the city of Fairview or by the city of Fairview in a city sponsored event. The second, Commissioner Butler, would be the expectation that if a member of the public or another agency were to donate funds to a third party fundraiser, for example, there would be a, the, the suggestion that was given to me was a car show where people go out, visit the car show, make a donation to the Bowie Playground or in the name of the Bowie Playground. My suggestion would be to draft a simple one page permit, no cost, there would be no fee for the permit, that the person in charge of that activity could present so that the person donating to that event could be assured that the city was aware that that donation was taking place and that the city would have some record of receiving dollars for that. The purpose for that would be, what I would not want to have happen is throughout the community, there be unsanctioned events unknown by the city of Fairview using the city of Fairview's name or the name of Bowie Park Playground and generating funds that the city never saw after the generation of those funds. So to protect the nonprofit and protect the city and protect the playground, which is obviously our goal, we would suggest a, a one page permit that the applicant comes in, gets, we issued on the spot. That way, we have a record of who is fundraising on behalf of the playground and the person donating to that event has an assurance that the city is aware that those dollars should be coming in and should be expended at some point for the playground.
So what do we need to do to make sure that happens?
If that were, if that would be the case, then just a simple resolution requiring a, a no cost permit be issued to anyone who's raising funds on behalf of the Bowie Park Playground.
So can you have that on our, do we, can we do that tonight? Or do we have to wait until you draft the resolution?
You can do it tonight. We can draft, the drafting of the resolution is just to be what you voted on. We'll just simply enumerate it and sign it.
Do we also need to include in that resolution, that resolution that the city maintain monies raised for the, the playground?
No.
Okay.
And the reason why is the, what we're looking to do is govern the name and use of the name of the Bowie Park Playground as a fundraiser so we can assure people who donate to that cause that that money will likely come back. We don't have the ability to demand at any time that a nonprofit holding dollars remit those dollars to the city. That's, that's a different scope. So we're, our, our discussions within staff are not to be in the banking business, but to give everyone involved in the fundraising efforts for Bowie Park Playground that everyone through the holding of a permit and recognition of a permit knows there's an expectation that that's a sanctioned event and the city understands that there will be some dollars come back to that, to that thing. I think if we're going to have the name out there for funds being raised, I think we owe it to everyone involved to have some recognition of those dollars being generated.
I understand that. So maybe my question was phrased inappropriately. So when we do the Pork in the Park, which is the first Saturday in November, by the way, and we're looking for sponsors and, and competition teams, we would bring our money back to you. That's a question mark, back to the city, not you.
And the answer is question mark. I don't know, question mark.
If they have a permit.
We're not, if, if the city of Fairview is doing that event, then the dollars would come to the city of Fairview.
Okay.
If there is a third party, in this case, your group doing that, then at any time, the organizers of that event can come make their donation to the city.
That's what I, that was my question.
And the city would hold that as a donation. So what, in that instance, what we would do is we would have issued you a permit that you would have had for that event. And then after that event is over, at some point, someone would come in if they choose to do so and don't, make that donation to the city. And we would simply record that donation and it would be in correlation with that permit.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Is there a difference when, like if I donate, say my business donates to a 501(c)(3) versus my business giving money to the city? Is that a different write-off?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think that it's a charitable deduction if you just give money to a city.
I don't, I don't do it as a charitable deduction. I do it as advertising so that I can write it off the top and that's perfectly legal. But I just don't know if that money goes, if it goes to a 501(c)(3), it's one thing. But if it goes to the city, it's something totally different.
Right.
So how do we handle that?
So I guess what the, you know, look, ultimately, the board's going to have to try to determine the scope of what you want the Friends of Bowie Park to be doing. Do you want them to be the exclusive entity that's raising funding for this playground? What role do you want them to play, if any, in the playground process? Do you want to be making the decisions about how this playground looks? Or do you want citizens to be making the decision about how this playground looks? Do you want them to be able to raise money about the, for the playground and be exclusive fundraisers for the playground project or not?
I think we both should. I think there's, there's opportunity for like possibly matching or funds from the city on one side. And then there's, you know, the, the advertising or donations to the 501(c)(3) on another side. So I think there's going to be a collaboration of, you know, city raised funds and 501(c)(3) Friends of Bowie Park raised funds.
So let me, let me try to answer miller ground questions best. Let me, after hearing all the discussion. So here's what would, would happen. At any time, any person, agency, group, organization, whoever could come to the city of Fairview and make a donation to the city of Fairview for the Bowie Park Playground. We would then issue them a receipt. When they get that receipt, however, that receipt affects their, their donation would be on their side. be on their side. We would simply record the donation as money received for Bowie Playground Project and issue them a receipt. That would, that would be one thing. The other thing would be if someone is advertising or making some concerted effort to raise funds on behalf of the park. We simply would want everyone to understand that that is a sanctioned fundraising with an expectation that dollars come back to the city of Fairview. That's what the permit would be for. So, let's say in this instance, at your business, you are in a fundraising effort for Bowie Playground Park. What we would simply do is issue your business that permit. So at that point, your business, in her name here, would be a, an acknowledged fundraiser for the Bowie Park Playground, so when people come in to make those donations, they can have an assurance that there's an expectation those dollars come back to the park. How or when that effort takes place would be there, but the effort is to make sure that the person raising the funds is successful, and the person donating the funds has a comfort level that they're actually donating. What we don't wanna have, the purpose of this, is not to have a cash jar on every convenience store, Dollar General, no offense to Dollar General, but wherever else we would be, so that there are cash jars out somewhere, people donating to the park, and at the end of the night, that cash magically makes its way to somewhere other than Bowie Park. So the purpose of the permitting process is just simply to give an acknowledgement that that is an authorized fundraising event, whether it be in a cash drawer, a cash drawer, or that, or some other thing. So, the permitting process is just to give an assurance to everyone. How the dollars get to the city, we would just simply receipt that out, and then it would go on its way.
Right, and, and I guess it is important to, to kinda understand the delineation, a nonprofit, if, if I were to give eighty thousand dollars to a nonprofit, um, I would be able to write that off of my taxes for that. If I gave it to the city, I wouldn't. So I think there is, um, opportunity to have them. I- if all we're talking about is a permit, that's easy, right? I mean...
Oh, oh, the city's not in the tax business.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying, though, for that nonprofit, if they're going out and going to collect those funds, they can pull a permit that's free, and everybody's okay.
Sure they can. All, the only, again, the total purpose of the permit
Mm-hmm.
is to let the person donating money have a comfortable expectation, they can be assured that those dollars are gonna make their way back to the city, and the city can match any donations that come in from that event to the permit holder.
Right.
It, it's just a simple accounting to keep everyone comfortable.
I'm kinda doing two things, but this is what I need to understand. Sorry. Okay, I'm kinda doing two things, so this is what I need to understand. I, I have funds coming in to go in postal for, you know, the jar that's collected by the Friends of Bowie Park on Friday, every Friday. I also am gonna donate from my business to the, you know, the playground, uh, fundraising. So, but I have to donate to the 501(c)(3) in order to write it off. I can't give those funds to the city of Fairview, it won't work the same.
That's clearly your privilege. The city doesn't care whether you give them to Friends of Bowie Nature Park.
But I mean, so are there two different...
I guess what, I guess it begs the question, what assurance of any do you have that the money will be donated to the city from the Friends of Bowie Park?
And that was my question.
How do we trust them? Who are they? Do you have, what assurance do you have of it?
Again, that would be the permitting process. So in that instance, we would simply issue two permits. Permit one would go to your business, so when people are in the business and they put money in the jar, you can say, "I'm an authorized fundraiser on behalf of the park." And then we would issue a permit to Friends of Bowie Nature Park, and wherever they generate their dollars, however they generate them, we would simply have a receipt at some point come in from the Bowie Nature Park.
No.
Or the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. It would just be, simply be...
But they would hold the money they, they collect in an account or something?
That is, that is their business and not the city's business.
Okay, so to Mr. Potter's question. If we're all out doing fundraisers, and we're not, at the end of our fundraiser, if we're not bringing the money, if we're giving it to the Friends of Bowie, or whoever it may be, whatever nonprofit we're, we're going through, right, how do we have any guarantee that that nonprofit will turn over those monies to the city at the appropriate time?
You don't.
So how do we make sure that's not happening? I mean, do we?
We can't.
We, we don't have, we don't have any assurance that you would turn over that money, though, from your, from your fundraising event, so...
You can't unless there's a contractual relationship between the city and the entity.
Yeah.
And then you've got maybe a contract argument, that they, you had a contract with them, and they've breached their contract with you. You gave them the right to raise money on your behalf. They were supposed to turn it over, they didn't, so you can sue them.
All right.
If they exist.
But is that the relationship that the city wants to have, or do we wanna have a relationship or any money, that money raised on behalf of the city is coming to the city? Legally, what do we need to do?
You can't, uh, you can't assure that. And if a citizen, if someone holds themselves out as they're fundraising on behalf of a city project, and they don't turn it over to the citi- to the city, presumably the donor has a claim. The donor has a claim that you, they were defrauded in some way, and they can bring an action, but the city's just a third-party recipient. They're a gr- you know, they're a, uh, a grantee. You can give it to me if you want. We don't have any obligation to, to force people who are fundraising on our behalf to give the money to us.
Right, I underst- I understand that.
They have an obligation to, to not misrepresent the donors, and that's their problem, right? They could lose their 501(c)(3) status or go to jail, I don't know. But you can't, uh, you can't go out and fundraise and then not give the money for the purpose that it's fun, but you, the giver, the, the beneficiary of the fundraising has no claim to enforce the gift.
Okay.
So what, what, the thought is that, you know, uh, there's a lot of different ways to skin the cat, but I get, you know, the document that you have before you is just an idea. And that's, the idea would be to say, "You're the official fundraiser for the park. You're, we're gonna permit you to go raise money for the playground because you've said you would. We're gonna, we're gonna sanction it, we're gonna honor it. You're gonna insure yourself, so that we're not gonna be held liable for any mess-up you have. You gotta get directors and officers insurance, you gotta get, uh, you know, general liability insurance, but, uh, and this money you're raising, we better get it, and, and we want it. You're gonna, and this is what, we're gonna set some parameters on what you can do with it. You gotta put it in a local bank. You can't commingle it. You gotta, you gotta get a relationship with an accountant, and that accountant gives us accountings of what's in there, and, uh, you gotta turn it over to us. And if they don't do it, they don't do it, and our, our, our only recourse at that point in time might be to sue for it, right, as a town. So, we can not, we can dispense with all of that, and, and just say, "We're not gonna, we're not going to enter into a contractual relationship with any third-party entity, but we're, we're not gonna be guaranteed the funds," right? If, if people wanna go out and gratuitously raise money for the town of Fair, for the city of Fairview, they can. People do it all the time, really. You get donations for different things, people do stuff all the time. The, the pig in the park, or whatever, all the stuff that happens, you can get money for that, but, you know, we can't go out and enforce the gift, right? So, I mean, I guess that you gotta make a decision, do we want, y- you might just wanna handle it that, that informally. You might just wanna set up a, uh, you know, have Mr. Collins set up a line item in the budget, I mean, in your general budget, and for, you know, receipts that you get from fundraising activities in the community, and it'll all be applied towards the park. But, um, you don't have any real control how much money that is, and you don't know if you're gonna get it, and you don't really have a lot of control over when you're gonna get it. You just kinda hope you get it, right? So...
This all sounds very confusing.
I, I really like the idea of the permit. I, I think it's so easy, um, and I think we've got a bunch of great people out here, uh, that are gonna be fundraising on behalf of, uh, you know, the, of getting a new playground in here. If it's the Friends of Bowie, if it's the Pig in the Park, if it's all of these things, I, I, I like the idea of the, the city having the bank account where the funds go into our bank account. We know exactly where we're at at all times. Everybody can see it, it's on the internet, um, and I, I like the permit idea.
I do too.
I, I also like the marketing idea, that if you pull a per- permit, you can use the emblem, you know, to make it more legit, or whatever that looks like. Um, I, I think it's super easy.
It's simpler to do it that way.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins, I think you've answered this before. Do we need to create a separate account, or just a line item on the budget where strictly those funds go directly to playground fundraiser?
No, sure. So, the way, we, we've already set this up internally, so everyone will know. The, the funds would be deposited to the, uh, park fund that we already have established. Uh, the park fund is, it's on separate bank account, um, and no, no activity takes place in the park fund bank account except for park fund activity. It also has its own separate general ledger, both revenue line items and expense line items. So in advance of this discussion, we have already added a revenue line item in the park fund budget that is, um, Bowie Park Playground revenue, and we've already created an expense line item, this Bowie Park Playground expense line item. So we'll know every dollar that comes in, we'll then take that, those receipts, compare those receipts to whatever permits we have, and now we have a paper trail for every dollar the city's received, every source, and every authorized, um, fundraiser, to use the city's name and likeness or other, uh, general terminology, so that everyone can be assured that that is in, in effect, um, the truth for the collection of those dollars.
Can we put the new playground logo on the permit?
Uh, I would, I would encourage the Board of Commissioners to adopt a new playground logo.
Have...
Motion to adopt a new playground logo.
Uh, uh, again, the, the permitting process, I, you could just, you just pass a resolution that says that, that, um, the city will, so, will issue permits at no cost to fundraisers, and, and then we'll, we'll put that permit together.
Then I make a motion that we, that the city does a res- that does a permit for any fundraising group, person that wants to do a fundraising event for the park.
Second.
Free permit.
Where do we get that?
What? You'll get it here.
Who, who do, who do I see?
With, I obviously wouldn't have the permit put together yet, so it'll take us probably a week to put that document together, and then, and then we'll have that. We'll post them on the website, they'll be, know where they are. Now, although we post the permit where you can get it, but we'll also per- post who's been permitted. So if you wanna look for an event to see who this is, you can look and see authorized or sanctioned events on behalf of the city, and we'll have the list of events that are people, organizations, what have you, that are permitted. So you'll know if you're skeptical about giving dollars or have questions, you'll be able to see those in real time, what, what those are.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll bring those out. So, that would be the first motion, and then if that motion passes...
Let's get through one first.
Yes.
We've already confused ourselves, so let's get through this one. So there's a motion, that we do the resolution, that the city issues permits to people who are doing fundraisers for the playground. They will come here to get them, they will be free.
Second.
The end. Was that a second?
It was a second.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, what's the second? Okay.
As a part of a follow-up to that, my suggestion would be, if there's gonna be an official logo to be used, that whoever's gonna provide that logo, simply get us a rendering of that. We can have that on the agenda at the next meeting.
Mr. Butler, can you take care of getting the logo? Okay.
So, once we get that, then everything we, everything the city does or has an association with would include that logo, so it would just be a part of the process for the fundraising, so there would be uniformity in, in how that works. I think that's a great idea, but we would need to make sure that's adopted.
Okay, can, so can we get that on the agenda for the next meeting? Thank you. Is that all of that we need to do?
Yes.
Are we finished with item H now?
Can, can I ask one question? Uh, because I'm new, how, what is the procedure to, um, ask for the city to donate some money to this project through the, in the budget?
The budgeting.
What is the procedure?
The budgeting process. The way, the way our budget works, the, that process is, um, before we adopt our budget formally, we will all meet together and have a work session, and we'll have all of that information lined out. Every single line item of revenue and every single line item of expense will be included in that budget. And one of those line items will be, um, park playground, and if there's money available in the city's park fund budget, we would simply allocate a portion of those dollars. It is as simple as putting in a number in a line item. I hope I've answered your question, but...
Well, so like, for instance, in the past, when, say there was a, something at the football field that needed to be done, or something at the baseball field that needed to be done, and that was brought before the board to ask for a certain amount of money, does that have anything to do with the budget?
Well, of course it does have something to do with budget, but that's a separate, that's a separate, what, those items were brought about by the Schools Facilities Fund, uh, that went away about three years ago now.
Okay, I just, I didn't know how that was...
So, so that system has wholly and simply gone away. As a matter of fact, the checking account's gone away, and all the dollars have gone away. So as it relates to dollars that the city holds, we would simply include that in a line item budget expense, and that's where those dollars would be.
Thank you.
Okay. Item I, Bowie Park Perimeter. Might I make a suggestion that we table this until our next meeting, when we're not here at ten fifteen, and we can figure out how to, figure out how to raise money? Or is this a short discussion?
Uh, Mayor, it's not even my discussion, it's your discussion, so I...
Oh, that's right, it is my discussion, and it will be short. Okay, we will, we will discuss this.
So, no, no, I mean, you, you're welcome to move it to the next meeting, I think that'd be appropriate.
Um, I would like to move this to the next meeting.
Second.
I agree. I think we need more time to discuss this.
And then there's something to that should come from the Planning Commission first?
That's totally the privilege of the Board of Commissioners. We're, that...
I don't think so.
I mean, would it be something in design review?
I like it. More input if we put it on the agenda for the Planning Commission next week and discuss it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move item I to the next meeting, when we get some feedback from the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
We do have a second. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, as a, just a fa- quick follow-up to that, just so everyone understands, that, that item is gonna have to be a part of your zoning ordinance. So you'll, you have to consider that as, as where you go. So if there's gonna be a park perimeter, there's gonna need to be a, a, um, subsequent zoning, uh, that requires that perimeter in a certain area. So as we get back to that, um, there would be, if, if the Planning Commission were to come up with some idea for a perimeter, that there would simply be a recommendation by the Planning Commission. The Board of Commissioners is gonna have to adopt a zone for that.
Thank you. All right, communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler.
Yes ma'am, real quick, next Saturday at nine AM, the Keep Fairview Beautiful, um, crew will be picking up trash. They usually meet here and, um, pick up trash. It's doing a great thing, they've, they picked a lot of trash. I, I got the opportunity to join them last month, and it was overwhelming how much trash was out there, um, so, just wanted to say that.
Commissioner Lucas.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to thank everybody for showing up, uh, once again, for the community, uh, showing up and, and telling us and communicating with us. Uh, it, it's what we want, it's what we need to make good decisions. We need to be educated, uh, and, uh, we need to be out there in the community. So I, I just appreciate everybody. Um, I hope everybody has a, a wonderful Easter this, uh, this, this weekend. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, happy Easter to everyone, and, um, I would like to just thank everyone for coming out as well. I, I believe we all love our park and love our community, and, you know, I mean, it, it's conflicting sometimes because you wanna make the right decision for everyone, and I think we can make the best decision for everyone. Um, Stacy Greathouse contacted me, and, um, Commissioner Butler, uh, went with him and his group and picked up trash, and he showed me pictures, and I just really wanna encourage the community, you know, this is our home. Let's, I know that some of, you know, some of it comes from people passing through, but a lot of it's on the back roads where, you know, that's where people live. So, let's all just pick up our trash and really, you know, help and come out and be a part of that. Um, you know, keep Williams a beautiful day, because it really helps when everybody gets together, and I know that if there's some, uh, students out there that need volunteer hours for, uh, school, that's, uh, that can work towards their volunteer hours. Um, thank you for the staff and everybody up here. We've worked really hard to try to, you know, do the best for our community, and I think we're, we're proving that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing tonight, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
We're adjourned.